...responder. And our first item is a presentation, which is a developer presentation from Shanlar Enterprises LLC regarding 1455 First Street, APN number 227-091-39 and 227-091-40.
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to put this item on the agenda for a small presentation. I know you may or may not be aware that the Escalon Lumber Yard will be changing ownership. So the Schmitz are selling to Larry Grassi. He currently is a long-term resident outside of city limits, but still an Escalonian. He also has a business in Houston, Grassi Fabrication. He and his family are here to discuss what they plan to do with that area and that property, and then answer any questions if you have any. Still in the early stages, but we were getting a lot of inquiries on what was going to be happening with that property in the future. So, because he knew we were so interested in finding out, he put this together for us. Come on up Larry. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Larry Grassi. She said, Dominique said, my family's here, Shannon and Harrison. Been a longtime resident of Escalon. Have seen a lot of things change in Escalon over the years. And one of the things I, that we feel strongly about is trying to preserve some of the unique things that Escalon has. And one of them, I think, is the Escalon Lumber Yards, just to really, the history behind the lumberyard is really interesting. And the Schmidt family, we've known for years. And just we've become, we've gotten the opportunity to be in a position where we feel that being able to preserve the, being able to take the office and preserve the office and turn it into some smaller offices, and being able to lease those out, and would help preserve that building. And we'd not do too much to it to change the looks of the building, but obviously bring it up to par. There's dire need. And then the rest of the property, we're looking at, there's already an existing building that my brother had built for the Schmitz, I believe about seven years ago. It's around a 5,000 square foot building that we look at breaking it up into 1,000 square foot, or depending on what the tenants would want, for leasable space. We have some family here in Escalon that already does some of that type of stuff. And there's a big demand, as far as they're concerned, of needing space, that's affordable space, to try to keep some of these businesses here in town and generate some funding for the city. I have a shop in Houston that we, we started building about 12 years ago. We were able to find a parcel of land that we could actually build on. We employ around 40 people. We're year-round work. We're constantly building projects. As you can see, the AMN industry and the Walnut industry, there's, you know, no end in that right now for the foreseeable future. We have no intentions to bring that business here. We just are wanting to really focus on, as I think you'd pass.
Yeah, we did share the letter.
Really trying to focus on keeping this a commercial, light commercial projects in that property. And I'm just here to answer any questions and concerns.
We're gonna start at this end tonight?
Has escrow closed?
It's hopefully gonna close this week.
Okay. That's all I have.
So you're gonna be repaving the, the office for the lumberyard. What about some of the other structures that, with a strong wind, look like they may come down?
The old glass shop, which is, that used to be there on Prospect, or which is now Prospect, and got moved over to where Prospect Street was, that's gonna be leaving the premises. It's gonna be moved out. The molding room, which is directly to the south of the office, until the Schmitz have moved their, the equipment that they have in there in cars, that'll eventually get tore down and also be replaced with a 5,000 square foot building, and kind of what I had said earlier. And then there'll be two other spots that eventually will hopefully be able to put a couple more buildings there. There's also some extra space behind the shop, I mean, behind the office area, that could possibly turn into just a, just a parking area, space for the office. So we're not, because I know if the beautification comes into place, there's obviously not gonna be enough room to park, and being able to get in and out of that area very easily.
So at some point in time, whenever they decide how they're gonna make that part of First Street look nice, there's gonna be the curb gutter sidewalks, all that issues there. I think it's a great idea. That is a great old building, it'd be nice to restore it. I have another question.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. Yeah, I echo the sentiments that it's great to keep it there and renovate it. Great to see the curb gutter and sidewalk there. That's gonna be an interesting undertaking.
The old scale may be gone.
Yeah.
The plywood. No, thanks for the presentation, and I look forward to seeing it progress.
Thank you.
Yeah, I echo that too. Thanks for coming for us and letting us know. Are you aware of all of the discussions that have happened over the years about the restoration for First Street?
Yes.
Going through there? So, you know, it sounds like you're gonna be taking on some of that undergrounding and sidewalks and things, so, thanks.
Yeah, I've been through it before, so.
The only thing I would ask is, parking, when, right now, I think it's a kind of almost a shared parking unwritten, that when the Portuguese Hall has events, or when their city has events, they've been kinda using Prospect, and I don't know if they've been infiltrating the lumberyard's space during those things. What's your feeling about that?
Being Dominique, and I believe you have talked about that whole Prospect Avenue there, you know, it's a, it's a big area, I think, you know, until, up till, I think, maybe six months ago, maybe a little longer than that. There used to be the old foundation of the old glass shop that used to be there, so really, everybody was not really, it wasn't an inviting area to come in and park. I think with a little bit of groundwork done, even if it was still left with the ground-up asphalt on there, and really graded out nicely, I think that should really be enforced to park there for the Portuguese Hall, and not really intrude onto the other businesses. I mean, even for Randy Schmidt, I mean, and his family, I mean, for them to allow them, you know, for people to go there, have a party, come out, person throw a cigarette at the lumberyard, I mean, they've already lost one building there to a fire. I really, I mean, that's just a big liability on their part, that they've taken upon, and just really had no, no voice of, I think, of saying, "No, you guys don't, you know, don't park here." Because there was really no available parking, where were they gonna park? But now that that's opened up and cleaned up, I think with a little bit more cleaning up, and a little bit more, maybe some signs put up, to encourage people to park there and not have to worry about tripping over things or running over things, I think it would be a better idea. And we, we are going to fence it at some point, to keep people from just wandering. I mean, I think for our, for our tenants, and just for our liabilities sake, we, you know, we'd just rather not have people on the property that don't, especially after hours.
Great, I appreciate you coming in.
So Larry, I have a question. As you know, there is an existing lease agreement with the Schmitz in lots 38 and 44.
Correct.
And so last month, we had the lease lessee come to us and talk about that area, long-term, I mean, long-term speaking, if they continue to use that area as a staging area, does that affect your plans at all for what you see in your property? Or your future property?
Well, I, I think that's one of the things why we really hit it on keeping this a light commercial, to be correct with what the zoning is now for that area. Right now, according to what that zoning is, the only reason that that property is being used for what it's being used for was just to be under the umbrella or under the wing of the Escalon Lumber Yard. And I think the council, pretty much since the Schmitz were in a position of them needing money to help keep their business open, they allowed that to kinda just fall under the wing. And there was, there's been, and I've seen the agreements, as soon as the business sale sells, that, 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 or that, it's not even really a conditional use, it's just a
Temporary use.
Temporary use, is gonna be, is gonna go away.
So then, so you purchased lots 39 and 40, correct?
Yes.
So lots 38 and 44, are they staying in the Schmidt family?
They, they are staying in the Schmidt family as far as under that lease.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out, okay, the minute you close escrow, then that makes the temporary agreement null and void, correct?
Correct. They've been notified that when escrow or close of sale, transfer of property occurs, that temporary incidental use will have about 45 days to vacate.
Okay, but who is, who is going to be, so the Schmitz still own 38 and 44?
They still own it, and they lease it to the Coleman's.
Okay.
But we've been advised, or it's our understanding, in their current lease agreement, it has another eight years, and after those eight years, the ownership would transfer over to the Coleman's.
Okay. So back to my question, if, after this eight-year period, if that continues to be a storage area, does that affect your plans for 39 and 40?
Well, it wouldn't continue to be a storage area, right?
Unless, yeah, so, once lot 40 sells, which is the primary business.
Okay.
Then according to the city, the storage is to cease.
Okay.
They have so long to clean it up. That is why the Coleman's came in, because they wanna seek differently, but truly, the way that it is right now, no. As soon as it sells, then they, they get notice that they need to clean that up.
So I don't mean to kind of go on your presentation, but that means that if the Coleman's wanna continue using storage for 38 and 44, they better purchase it from the Schmitz?
Which she, it's our, it's our understanding as well, that the way that lease is written up, they can, they can purchase.
But even if they purchase it, doesn't mean that the city's gonna allow them to do that. They have quite a few more steps that they have to take.
Yeah.
Before it would be allowed, regardless whether they own it or not.
And that's why she had come to the, to the council, to both council and the planning commission, kind of trying to feel it out, is because they would have to go through a process, they would have to request a zoning amendment, and that would need to be approved by both planning commission and council. And then they would also have to apply for a conditional use permit, which would attach the conditions of approval to their use if it were to be approved.
Okay.
So it's a process that would take, you know, anywhere from three to six months, depending on how quick everybody's moving on it, as well as a zoning amendment that will take, it would take a few months to process. So she basically came to feel that out, to see if either boards would even consider that action.
Okay. So back to you.
So I, I'm not trying to avoid the question, but I just wanted to make sure it was understood that it's really, it's really based on the lumberyard being in business.
Right.
So my, so would it affect our business if down the road, the zoning was changed to allow them to do that, to do what they're doing? I, I think we have purchased this based on what the zoning is now, and are willing to make this investment to keep this as, as a, a light commercial project, not a heavy industrial use storage. I, I don't think it would be fair, you know, to some, some of the other businesses that have had to really make big steps into trying to access their property, like P&amp;L Concrete, for instance, just because they have, you know, they want it to go down Roosevelt, but they can't.
Okay.
So I mean, it would really change, I think, all of, I mean, First Street would not be accessible for a truck route. If the beautification goes in, for sure it's not. So Roosevelt really isn't a designated truck route for that type of storage either.
And Prospect doesn't exist anymore, so.
Right.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Chair Strumman, we did receive a request, and we did check with item number two to swap with item number three. So we'd like to move forward with item number three, which is the variance amendment. Oh, sorry, minutes, sorry. I'm already jumping ahead of the game to catch up.
Okay, we, on consent calendar, we have an item, one item, approve the minutes from the meeting of May 14th, 2019. Any comments? All right.
Oh, yeah, I had one comment from the public hearing, and that was on the ADUs, but I think I'm gonna wait till we get to the ADUs.
Okay.
Okay, any comments? We have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of May 14th, 2019.
A motion to approve the minutes.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. We have no administrative matters. As you were saying, Ms. Romo.
Yes, we'd like to swap item number three to item number two, please. And move forward with project 19-697, the variance amendment for 1310 Kern Street.
Okay. Taken away with the staff report.
All right. This project was introduced and reviewed at the March 12th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting, and Planning Commission requested that staff return with some clarifications on certain items before any action be taken and continued to the, to the next April 9th meeting. Staff gathered additional information and gave a presentation concerning the setback requirements if the fence was not stucco, and the sidewalk requirement, condition 10, whether the city engineer found the installation of ADA compliant sidewalk feasible at this location as requested by commission at the April meeting. It was staff's understanding that the Planning Commission approved the variance application, reducing the setback requirement on the patio structure from 10 feet in accordance with the municipal code to a setback of one foot nine inches between the rear alley fence and the proposed patio fireplace, providing the rear fence was stucco. Modifications were also made to condition number 10, removing the requirement to install sidewalks on the project. It was also staff's understanding that the Planning Commission confirmed that the oleander bushes in the traffic view area at Yosemite Avenue and Kern Street be removed, which the applicant had completed prior to the meeting. City staff had shared with the Planning Commission that the existing fence and remainder of the oleander bushes along Yosemite Avenue did not meet the current municipal code height requirements regarding fences, hedges, and walls. It was staff's understanding that the Planning Commission did not take action to condition the, the project to meet the code height requirements in order to obtain approval on the variance application. Staff updated condition 10 and the conditions of approval to reflect that compliance was not required at the time, but went on to advise the applicant that the city cannot and does not waive its authority to require compliance with the Escalon Municipal Code, should the public health, welfare, and safety needs of the city so require, in the sole judgment and discretion of the city. City staff also identified issues that would be of concern, including the bushes and/or fencing blocking visibility and affecting pedestrian or vehicular traffic, or a future public works project, such as a sidewalk installation project in the vicinity of this address. The Planning Commission did not oppose any other actions that added, modified, or removed any of the other conditions of approval for the project. Hence, the conditions were not modified, that were not modified, were not removed by city staff, and moved forward with the project approval, as that is how they were presented to the commission for action. After the April 9th meeting, the applicant was sent an action letter on the project, along with an updated list of, of the conditions of approval, reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission. In regards to project approvals, it is a standard practice for city staff to review them with said applicant, and to have applicant sign the document acknowledging that they are both correct, and that the applicant agrees with them, or agrees that that was the action of the council, of the commission at the meeting. Also, as indicated in condition number four, approval, a copy of the document is then filed with the clerk recorder's office. This action serves the applicant, future property owners of said property, as well as the city, because it establishes a record of the approval obtained from the city, should anything come up regarding placement, setback, variances, and/or exceptions that were approved by the city. Upon review of the conditions of approval, the applicant has requested additional clarifications and modifications to the conditions, amending the original variance application approval. Number one, a three-foot setback between the patio structure slash pergola and the house. Currently, the municipal code requires a setback of five feet between structures. Number two, modification of number 10, no reduction in height of the existing side yard fence and the oleanders for the remaining section of the fence along Yosemite Avenue. And number three, removal of condition number 13 regarding the stucco fence. An exemption from needing to install sidewalk, oh, and this should have been labeled as number four, sorry about that, it should have been numbered. An exemption, number four being an exemption from needing to install sidewalk with any future projects. The applicant is seeking approval of a three-foot setback between the patio structure and pergola of the house. Currently, the, the code requires a setback of five feet. Staff finds this request acceptable, as the three feet is a minimum amount of space required for emergency and fire access pursuant to California Building Code and Fire Code. Condition number 10, existing side yard fence and oleander bushes. In accordance with the municipal code, the existing side yard fence and oleander bushes that remain along Yosemite Avenue do not meet the city's requirement. And then in accordance with 17.41030, fences, hedges, and walls. Letter A in residential zones, walls, fences, and hedges within a required front yard, side yard adjacent to a street or alley, or that portion of a required rear yard within 15 feet of a street or alley, where adjacent to the side yard shall not exceed a maximum height of three feet. Item D, on those portions, on those portions of a corner lot within a traffic view area in any zone where fencing is permitted, walls, fences, and hedges, or any other physical obstruction shall not exceed a maximum feet of 30 inches above the curb. The applicant is requesting that the Planning Commission approve the side yard fence setback in height, along with allowing the oleander bushes to remain as existing regardless of future projects. If approved, it would prevent the city from requiring code compliance in the future if an issue concerning health or safety occurs. Although the city acknowledges that the fencing and bushes have existed how they are currently placed, city staff remains concerned with a six-foot fence approved in an area of the code specifically limited three feet in height. However, staff does understand that the Planning Commission may allow a variance on the setback of the fence based on the unique placement of the home on the corner lot. In regards to the oleander bushes, staff has concerns regarding future compliance should a sidewalk project become viable, or health and safety concerns arise. Either way, the Planning Commission approves the, if the Planning Commission approves the applicant's request, city staff requests that the approval condition, that the bushes must remain trimmed back sufficiently so that passenger doors of parked vehicles can be easily opened. A sidewalk exemption, the applicant has also requested that they be exempt from needing to install sidewalks with any future projects. It is staff's understanding from legal counsel that the Planning Commission and city council cannot grant this because it binds hands of future commissions and councils of the city. The Planning Commission and city council consider project applications on a project-by-project basis, and reviews, and review them based on law at present. As indicated to the Planning Commission, city staff intends to work on an amendment to this section of the municipal code requiring sidewalk installation, then present it to both Planning Commission and city council at a later date for comments, approval, and adoption. Condition 13 regarding the stucco fence, the applicant.
I believe the three fin, three-foot clearance was approved as a proper fire.
But the stuccoing was, was part of it. And now you're saying you don't want a stucco.
The reason that we're trying to talk about the stucco is because you would be in violation of California Building Code because the fence is a combustible material.
Okay, so how far away do you want me? Five feet, or three feet? I thought that the three feet was within fire rating deal.
If you stuccoed.
If you stuccoed.
At the three foot from the rear fence, there will still need to be fire rating measures done to the pergola, one hour fire rating on the posts, and anything within five feet. If you move the pergola to a setback of five feet from the rear fence, there's, there's no fire rating measures, it's, it's clear for the building code.
But I don't think that's possible based off their plan.
Well, but you also said that the, it was, if I set it back three feet, then it would be fire rating material for the pergola.
Correct.
Not the fence.
Correct.
And we are okay with that. We just are not, I don't know how stuccoing the fence came up, we weren't.
It's just trying to.
I mean, that's. We would never have done that.
Okay, I can tell you how it came up, is because the fire chief is, or the fire department is concerned that you have a gas fireplace in such close proximity to, to the fence, that what is to prevent the fence from catching on fire? And it doesn't matter if it's three feet or five feet, the fire department is concerned that because you're on that very back line, what is separate, where is the fire separation from the fireplace to the fence line?
And we've had further discussions with the building department, and the, the fireplace is going to be brick, and because brick is an acceptable material, fire rated, the building department is okay with the fireplace even being up next to the fence. They're not concerned about, the pergola structure does matter, what materials are used, if it's less than five feet from the back, the fireplace, they're gonna allow because they plan to use brick, which is an acceptable material, with a wood fence.
Okay. Have we actually, sorry, I'll ask my question after we go down the line.
I'm just letting you guys all talk.
Sure, well, I'll jump in. So I appreciate the, the clarification, because how you stated it was different than how I took it when I read it. So, it sounds like we're, a couple things, I, I don't think it's right to make you change your fence and your oleanders because you're putting up a pergola that's been there for how many years. Reserve the right to do that in the future, if it becomes a hazard, but I don't think that's a condition that we necessarily need to put on this project. That's more of a code issue that can be dealt with, with the city. It sounds like the, the rear setback, the one, the three, whether it's three foot or five foot, that's been resolved. The three foot from the house, that is within California Building Code. So I think that's been, you've accepted that, and it's been resolved. And then, what was the last one? The sidewalk for future projects, so.
Don't bring that up.
That sidewalk was already, we already took care of it.
I was at a birthday party that night.
We'll talk later.
So, I mean, I agree with, with, with the staff recommendation, that that's not something we can put in here, to exclude that of any future projects, that just limits it. So I, I appreciate you describing it, and I think, unless I am hearing incorrectly, you're, we're kind of in agreeance, but we'll see as we go, as we go along here. Mr. Castellanos?
So I want staff to create a clear picture. We have a six-foot wall, and a fence. We have high oleanders that are up against the six-foot fence.
On the side yard.
Yeah.
You've been 1310 Kern.
And because of the. And because of the construction of the ole, of the pergola, we're asking the applicant to reduce the size, height of the fence from six to three feet.
No.
As part of this application, this variance for the pergola and the fireplace and extending out the, the dining room, that staff of city is not gonna request that that be reduced.
Okay.
But we do want to reserve the right in the fut, not, not a permanent grandfather, but we do reserve the right in the future if, if there's an accident on the corner and they say, well, it's because their fence was in this way, or the bushes were in this way I can't see, well, the city wants to reserve the right to say, it's become a problem, it now needs to meet municipal code.
And that's worst-case scenario.
City still wants to have the ability of, if something arises, that justifies it-
Right.
We need to do something.
Yeah, and that would be the, the worst-case scenario that we could see playing out, is that somebody that perhaps isn't familiar with the neighborhood or driving through the area, depending on whatever conditions or things that are going on, you know, they, they drive down that road, they take the corner too sharp, whatever, and then the fence comes up as I couldn't see, or I couldn't, whatever, and then knowing that currently it doesn't meet our municipal code, which requires fencing within that, and within that setback of the house to be down to three feet.
Are your objection to that?
Well, I think it's a couple of things. One, I think that, one, I think that it needs to be stated that we don't have to reduce our fence and reduce our oleanders. If, if we want to talk about another legal agreement having to do with, you know, complying with the City of Escalon Building Code in case there's an accident, well, maybe that could be just something separate, but realize that when, when, when I came to do a variance for three feet, one, no, one point one feet nine inches, and I went to the planning commission to do that, as an action letter, I got a nine-page document, nine pages that included many, many, many things for me to get notarized and signed and have it filed with my deed of trust.
Well, the reason for that is because you're asking for a variance, and so-
So the variance that I'm asking for though is, is, you know, having to do with the six-foot fence and stuff like that. I think to put things in there having to do with, well, in case there's an accident, we reserve the right to, you know, have you, if there's an accident and someone's gonna sue us, then we're gonna have to proceed along with the city, but, I mean, I don't know, it just, it's-
Well, it's, I think part of it also is the location of your property and the proximity to the high score. I think that's, that's a big issue too. You know, I mean, if it was on some side street, but, you know, there's a lot of traffic going there, there's a lot of, let's say, new drivers, that some of them can show off, and I, I think what-
I just don't think it's, I've just gotten to a point where it's just not worth putting anything into our home that would cause a permit. It, it's just, I feel like it's just one thing after another, and so, I, I'm just to the point where I just, I'm not going to do it.
Well, they're not asking you to do anything right now.
They're asking me to page, to sign a nine-page document that talks about the lowering of the fence, you know, in, in case I do something, you know, and, I mean, you know that my attorney's gonna get involved with this particular nine-page document, and are we gonna sign something that puts us at risk having to do with that because I want to put a pergola in my backyard? You know, the only reason you're asking me to lower my fence, sign a document, and have it registered with my deed is because I'm trying to build a pergola.
Well, I think that once you, and I, I've been part of this, nobody was saying anything to you before you came to the city, is that correct?
Correct.
And once you come to the city and you, you're trying to do a project that needs to permit, the city's gonna review the whole area, and that's why you've got all of these other things that you hadn't, you know, intended to see.
But yes, we just won't do a pergola.
Well, I, I, I don't know that, you know, going through this again with all of the three item, four items for the variance, that there seems to be a problem. You said that five feet from the rear fence is no problem, nobody's asking you to do anymore with the oleanders, but there will be something, the city's not gonna release the obligation if there's a, a problem down the road that the city could be sued for because they haven't enforced their own regulations.
And I totally understand that. It's probably how the city is, who knows how they're gonna write it in there. I have no problem with it if the city got themselves in trouble because of our oleanders, you know, I, and totally-
What happens if you sell the property? That, this document goes with the property, so the next owners would be under that same umbrella. So it's probably not gonna happen, but if, if it does, the city reserves the right.
So I would suggest that there would be no condition that would want me to reduce the height of my fence down to thirty inches. I would just as soon never do anything to the property other than sell it and move because reducing it down to thirty-
But that's one of the variances you're seeking. The code says it has to be this, and you're asking for the variance to not make it be this. So that's what we may or may not grant, just like your variance for the setback in the back, your variance for the setback from the house. You have all these different variances from the code that you're seeking, which we have to evaluate, do we want to grant them or not? Because you're, you wouldn't be in compliance.
Those, so these are, these are my requests, and, and I'll just go from there.
I just wanted to put it out there for the applicant, how the planning commission decides to vote or not, but if you were to keep the pergola at a dimension that meets current code setbacks, so ten feet from the rear fence, five feet from a side fence, you wouldn't need a variance, you would still need a permit, probably because it's over a hundred and twenty square feet, but you wouldn't have to sign anything, the agreement with conditions of approval, it would just be a standard, apply for a building permit, submit your construction drawings, and move forward as that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
So my, I'm going through this, and I'm perfectly fine with the three-foot setback. I'm okay with the oleanders. I mean, I think we've beat that horse to death. The stucco fence, sure, as long as it's brick and it's a non-combustible material. The thing that concerns me though is our favorite topic, the sidewalk, and that is, I understand what you're saying about don't want to install a sidewalk. However, as Commissioner Danziger noted, if there are any future projects, even if you and your husband no longer own the property, if somebody else comes in and decides they wanna add, tear down the pergola that we've been talking about for the last four months, and add in addition, this condition stays with the property. And so there, somebody could double the square footage of your home and then say, oh, well, I don't want to do the sidewalk. And I think, I'm not speaking for all of my fellow commissioners, but I will, I can definitely speak for myself in saying that I personally thought it was ridiculous to make you spend five thousand dollars for a sidewalk. However, if, as a planning commissioner, if you were to come in and say, I'm doing a hundred thousand dollar addition to my property, then yeah, we might say, hold on a second here, now you have to do the sidewalk.
And I, I understand that.
So-
I'm not opposed to that, it's just, you know, I, I wanted to put a pergola up, I had to do the sidewalk, and you guys said I didn't have to do that, that's fine, you know? If, if any other time I want to pull a permit, I was told, well, you're gonna have to address the sidewalk issue again, you know? I, I think the city is going through some sort of deal where they're gonna make some modifications, come up with some dollar amounts, blah, blah, blah. Okay, that's fine, you know? But, you know, so, I'm, I'm not incredibly concerned about the sidewalk, it's just, I keep jumping through this hoop having to do with the way things are presented, and I felt that, you know, if I pulled a permit, you know, and my, my pergola was within limits, I kinda got the impression at some point in any, some conversations that the sidewalk issue would come up again, not just because I was doing a variance, it was because I was pulling a permit. So if I pull a permit and it doesn't require a variance, or the sidewalk issue's not gonna come up, I have no idea.
If you pull a permit, you have a variance, you don't have to do the sidewalk.
And I, yeah, I mean, and she, for something else.
But she said, yeah.
That's not, I mean, I don't know how you just stated that, but if she pulls a permit with a sizable amount of-
I meant pulling up the pergola.
And not, and not necessarily need a variance, then yes, there is the potential, because it has come up on other projects where we've asked for sidewalk to put in. So the applicant was told that, that we couldn't guarantee that for future projects, it wouldn't come up.
And I think we're all on the same page.
And I just wanted to add, you, you talked about maintaining the oleanders, and I, I'm sure you will, but there are things in this community that are complaint-driven, you know, so if somebody had a problem with it and then came to us, then, then we'd go to you, and hey, it needs to be trimmed back, it needs to be whatever, but you mentioned that you would keep it in, in good trim, so.
And I don't believe we've received any complaints.
No.
Hey, staff, there's this house on Kern that has-
[laughing]
Just kidding. So, my only other question is, has PD looked at the oleanders and provided any comments?
So those pictures that are listed in here, Exhibit A, outside of the car, those were taken by our police chief. Although he does say that there are, you know, the, the three-foot fence does pose an issue, there's also other factors on that corner that pose issues. We know that there's a light pole that's there, you know, the large tree, those type of things, so it's not, and parking, of course, everybody that's, that parks on that area. So it's, it's, no, no more poses a concern than everything else that's located on that corner. That's why, at staff's recommendation on that item, we're not recommending that you cut it down to the three feet, we would be understanding and knowing that given her placement on the property and then that fencing is along her back fence, as long as, as the commission agrees on, on doing that, that's fine. We, we, we're just citing that in our code currently, it requires things within that area, any structures or fencing, wedges, hedges and, and walls, be at a maximum of three feet, but we do understand their circumstance of their property on that corner, so.
Call me crazy, but if I'm looking at Exhibit A, the first photo is a before picture, and the second photo is an after picture, what the Claire's did?
Exhibit A, there's two sides, the first picture in Exhibit A, this is post-removal of the twenty-five feet corner of oleanders, so this is after the oleanders were removed. Exhibit A is when the police chief was parked at the stop sign where you legally should be stopping, and then the second page of that is moving forward out through the crosswalk, trying to make the turn. So this is all after the bushes had been pulled out.
So he's kinda creeping into it like it's a blind intersection, that type of approach?
Well-
So we know that there's, there's other issues with that corner as well. His, his main one that, that came first was the parking, and that's why they, at one time, we had talked about the red curb and all of that stuff, but that's not, that's not an issue right now with the red curbing, so.
And I said it before, and I'm going to say it again, I think the parking issues along Yosemite are an issue that the city and the school district need to determine and, and look at, because even with this big truck there, I mean, yeah, we could force the, the Claire's to take down the oleanders and jump through another hoop, but at the same time, still doesn't resolve the line of sight issue with parking along Yosemite.
And, and that wasn't the direction that we were moving, was to remove all of those oleanders, it was just keeping the option open if there was a future issue. I mean, in, in talking with the applicant, the other side of it is, is, you know, she didn't want to have to ever come back and address her fence or the sidewalk, so, because the fence is not in a proper setback, and, or it's too tall for where it is. So the oleander side and the fence side were, you know, separate concerns that came up or that she would like to not have to address in the future. I don't know that, I don't know that we could do that for the oleander side of it, the fence side of it, you guys could choose to make that variance on where the setback is.
Any other comments or questions for public hearing?
All right, thank you, Mrs. Claire.
With that, we will close the public hearing at eight oh three. Questions for staff, comments? Commissioner Sarkozy?
No, no questions.
Commissioner Willis? Commissioner Castellanos? Since no one wants to speak on this issue, I guess I will speak. I can understand these conditions, however, I do not want to make a condition on, I do not want to make an exemption for the sidewalk with any future projects because we're then essentially tying the hands of any future planning commissioner or city council. So with all due respect, Mrs. Claire, I am not comfortable issuing this particular variance, however, we're so used to seeing you and your husband that if you come before us, until we get, until city provides a dollar threshold for where, when we're gonna enforce the sidewalk, I think it would probably, I think you can understand our position as the planning commissioner, we don't want to give you a, an exemption for something fifty years from now, because hopefully, I don't know, maybe I'll be a planning commissioner fifty years from now, but I, I, I don't know. So, those are my thoughts. All right.
And up on the screen, I have the four amendments that were being brought before you, just as a reminder.
Just one last question for staff. Can you just let, just for my own information, the nine-page document that we received, or that the Claire's received that they have to notarize and return, within that, is it just conditions of approval? Is that what is contained within this document?
Yes, it's the list of conditions of approval that are pages six. There's additional information because what it, what we do do is, is have it summarize how we got to this point, so when our attorney reviews it, they put in like background language as to the applicant's property, what they were requesting, how the city moved forward with it, that type of thing, so it's, it's longer, and then it asks for signatures. It's not a document that's required to have a signature, it is something that whatever the planning commission approves, the city can, can take it down and have it recorded because it's an approval from our, our own board, a planning commission, or a council, but we've stuck with the policy of having it signed so that we can bring the person in and review it, so that if there are issues of concern or things that come up, we can address them. And so it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of served in a positive way in that aspect that, that signing it had to read everything, which some people don't read everything, so it, it brought us here, which, you know, took longer obviously, but also has the applicant read everything to make sure what they're signing. And so, yeah, I mean, it's normal for anybody to see those type of documents as maybe something that they don't feel comfortable signing, and that's where staff would come in and, and explain everything, but it is a document that we've used in all of our projects that come to the planning commission. It's, it's something that the planning commission sees for the most part because that's what the planning commission's role is, conditional use permits, conditions of approval, so very rarely does this type of document go to council level because that's what this board's for, to take care of those items of concern. The only one exception being the last, the last project we had for Lear Village, that had conditions of approval that saw both boards because it had the rezoning of a planned development, so, but- But that's the process, and that's how it's been. And we're also gonna be open to making updates to that as well, if needed, so.
Okay, thank you. So, I think my recommendation is to grant a variance on conditions one. On number two, a modification to condition 10, no reduction in height of side yard fence in the oleanders for remaining section of fence along Yosemite Avenue. I would like to change that to, I agree with staff that the city reserves the right in case of a life safety issue as a result of the height of the oleanders along Yosemite Avenue.
Just the oleanders or the fence also?
Both, the fence and the oleanders. And Mrs. Claire, I think you can understand our position on that is that we want to respect you and your husband's privacy. However, we still, I mean, we still need to protect the city and by putting this, we're also protecting you as the homeowner. And then, I think we can remove the condition number 13 regarding the stucco fence. Granted that the fireplace is made out of a non-combustible material and the pergola has some sort of fire rating due to the three-foot setback.
So, I just had a question on number two, the wording of it. So, to summarize, are we saying that for item two, it's not, it'll just be striked from the approval?
That's what she's wanting. If you look at the screen now, I have up, it's number 10. This is how it's currently worded for the conditions of approval.
So, in order to, how we're voting on this, what you just said. Sean, you suggesting that that whole condition, any modification to the fence be not a condition of the project?
No, basically following this exactly what the staff is recommending, that the city reserves the right in the case of a safety issue regarding public health, welfare, and safety needs of the city require. So, we're telling them, leave your oleanders and your fence, don't touch it. But if we have a major accident there at the corner, then the city reserves the right to have a discussion with the Claire's to say, okay, we need to talk about the oleanders.
So, do we just say no modification of number, condition 10?
Correct. And then, number four, how do we have that? Do we have that listed in these conditions? Staff?
Currently, I believe that is item...
It was part of 10, we took it out.
Did it say we did take it out, yeah.
But number four, she was requesting that it be exempt from all future.
And I don't think, well...
That was her number, yeah, her fourth, the fourth request was about the potential of not having the sidewalk for future projects, but we've taken it out as a condition in this currently.
So, if you were to accomplish number four, if you wanted to provide the kind of grandfathered or lifetime exemption, you would add a condition of approval with that exemption. If you don't want the lifetime exemption, you would just leave it as is, no modifications to the conditions.
Can we assign a, well, my thoughts are, like we talked about, or not we, I talked about, where rather than put it on any future projects, modify this to be until city staff and the planning commission determine a dollar threshold, an appropriate dollar threshold for future construction projects or something like that. Can we do that?
And planning department is planning to take this change to the code, the sidewalk code, in July. So, you, I mean, it's not necessary, you could put a condition that red maybe, this project is exempt from sidewalks, however, future projects must adhere to the municipal code. It's kind of a given that you have to adhere to the municipal code, so it doesn't necessarily need to be stated.
And that's probably best as well because we're not absolutely sure at this point. We're gonna try to provide both the planning commission and council with options. So, applying that regulation to a evaluation threshold is an option. We're also seeing other ways that cities make that assessment and whether or not sidewalk's done. So, we're gonna provide more than one way that the, both the planning commission and council can review.
Why don't we just reword that to say an exemption from needing to install sidewalk with this project?
We don't really need to do anything. I mean...
That was approved at the last time, so they already got that approval.
So, just take it all out of there?
Yeah.
So, then we will remove number four?
Okay.
Correct?
Well, we're not removing any, anything from the proposed conditions at this time.
You'd be denying that request.
Yeah.
Of all future requests.
Of having exempt from all future projects.
So, on condition number 10, you're indicating that you're gonna leave it as is, but in the... The second, well, the second one is the city acknowledges the fence as existing. However, staff understands that planning commission may do the variance. And I think that these three paragraphs get pretty convoluted as to what it is that we're supposed to do, other than if you just modified this to say that, you know, the variance is allowed, but if the city has a, what was it, a viable health or safety concerns, then it would be addressed again. And I'd also like to have removed where they're sufficiently trimmed back so passenger doors of parked vehicles can be easily opened. That's pretty subjective. I think that we just need to say that our oleanders will be trimmed back. So, my comments on 10, it's pretty lengthy.
I, since we're splitting hairs, I would like to strike the phrase in condition 10 that says, "And in the sole judgment and discretion of the city," and change that to say, "In cooperation with the homeowner of the property." Can we do that?
Planning commission can change the conditions however they agree upon.
Okay.
But we will say that the attorney is the one that drafted this.
Drafted that, yeah.
Okay. Well, but what if, what if the city comes and says, well, your oleanders caused this and the homeowner believes that they didn't, the oleanders had nothing to do with it? And then it's a battle between the city and the homeowner. And by this sentence, it's saying, city wins.
So, what would happen is the city would issue like a code enforcement notice? You know, the bushes don't meet municipal code, it's time to trim them back, or the fence, you know, whatever the issue is. The fence does not meet municipal code, it's time to take it down to height. And as part of the code enforcement process, the applicants have a right to appeal. So, we would issue a code enforcement notice. If they disagree, they would file an appeal. There's an appeals process, there's an appeals board.
Officer.
So, it does have a process and there is a way for them to have their say.
You're forcing them to get rid of the oleanders and it's done.
No, no.
And it says that here, "They're not requiring removal or intense trimming at this time. The city cannot and does not waive its authority to require compliance with the Esplan Municipal Code, should the public help, blah, 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 go on." I don't see any reason to remove anything from 10. I think it's pretty clear that it gives them the leeway that they're looking for. And if there's a problem where nobody can get out, which I can't understand because it sounds, you know, pretty conscientious, that that shouldn't be a problem. If future owners own the house, then, you know, you don't wanna put the city in a position where they can't do anything. So, I'm not for changing 10.
I do understand the confusion where we're putting a variant, we're approving a variance to not reduce the fence, but then we're also saying we're, we have the right, if there's a safety issue, that we can? Can't the homeowners go back and say, will you approve this variance? What supersedes?
We're saying that we're approving the variance at this time. We're not requiring removal at this time.
With project-related, so specific to this project, the municipal code pertaining to that section is not being enforced, but we reserve the right to enforce it if issues of health, safety, that type of thing occur.
Okay. Any other comments? You guys are being awfully quiet at this end tonight. Okay.
And I guess I do, I'm a little taken aback with how that's worded because you could build your pergola and with the understanding that, you know, I have a variance for the fence and you're happy in your backyard and then the city comes through and says, no, there's a safety issue now, we need you to lower your fence. You know, that's gonna affect the way you use your whole, your house. You may have, if that's the case, you may not choose to do this project. So, you're kind of, it's kind of a limbo area, where we're not really giving her clear direction on what the final outcome could be.
We're giving her a variance on all of the things she's asked, but we're not giving up control if in the future there's a problem with these items that don't meet code now. That's what we're saying. We're not saying that there's going to be, that there ever will be, but should that happen, we're not gonna tie the hands of the city or future commissions on how we look at these things. So, I think that's a win-win. You know, yeah, it's a lot of paperwork there, but, you know, other than a lot of work for both the city and the applicant, I'm pretty good with the way it's come out.
Okay, so, do we have a motion to make the finding, or to approve the amendments as we discussed?
So, just as a recap, granting recommendation number one, denying recommendation number two.
You're saying...
So, we, these are, this one, two, three, four, yes, sorry, these one, two, three, four, yes. So, granting request number one, denying and going with staff recommendation for number two, granting number three, and denying number four.
Number three, specific to...
The stucco.
Brick fireplace.
The fireplace is a non-combustible material as well as the pergola be made from a fire-resistant material to satisfy the requirements of the fire department.
And building code.
And building code. You don't need building code.
That's standard.
Okay. Do we have a motion so that the Claire's can finally build their pergola?
So, on item 10, we're leaving in there, we're leaving it as is, passenger door and just, I just wanna make sure that we're all clear.
I have a thought about that. It's not, I mean, passenger doors are different, depths, lengths, widths, whatever. Is there a different way to quantify, you know, how far the oleander needs to be from the curb?
You could do it for what the size of the sidewalk would be, four feet?
How much does that leave then of the oleanders? If you've got four feet in from the curb, how much are the oleanders, like two feet?
I'd say about two.
Well, even four feet seems excessive, maybe three. It just seems like a three-foot is a standard, but a passenger door, you know...
Although if a person is parking there and their passenger is getting out, you would open your door, step out onto that gravel area and walk down the gravel area to the corner where you're gonna cross the street.
But if it's a two-door vehicle, the door's gonna be bigger than a four-door vehicle. If it's a van, if the passenger's in a wheelchair and has to get out, you know, it just seems like a foot measurement, a specific size.
I would agree with Commissioner Willis that rather than say a passenger door of a parked vehicle because if you have a F-350 on a 24-inch lift kit, I mean, you know, it's a passenger door.
Exactly, exactly.
Versus a Volkswagen Beetle or a Mini Cooper that has a two-and-a-half-foot door. So, I would agree that we say, put a limit, three feet.
How far away is that truck from the oleanders now?
About this much.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Is that a foot, two? Yeah, I don't know. I can't quantify it either. I agree with Barbara, but I don't...
Well, I'm thinking, you know, think of a parking lot. You know, how much room do you, normally, you don't have enough room to swing your door all the way open to get out. So, is that a fair expectation of, yeah, so I would, yeah, I think it's some sort of a measurement, yeah.
Two feet?
Two feet.
If you want, add it in as a condition.
No, strike.
Just update that section.
Well, just however, the bushes must be trimmed to, within two feet of the curb, the back of the curb or something.
An addition to number 10.
Yeah, just...
No, within modification to number 10.
Yeah, just the end of that one sentence, change it.
This 12 inches, so it's two of these. Can you get out of a car?
Of course I can. So, strike, strike the, must be trimmed insufficiently so that the passenger, and say, must be trimmed two feet from the back of curb.
Yeah, 'cause that gives a, how big is a curb, like six inches, so, I like quantifying it.
So, you go out there to learn.
Any other comments? Okay, do we have a motion on the table?
So, how do we, so I'll motion to approve as noted, or should I read them?
As noted, it's fine.
As noted.
As noted, it's fine.
On items one through four.
And make the findings.
And we have to find that the project is sequoia class exempt? And approve the variance amendments as previously noted.
So, items one through, I guess it'd be six then? Motion to approve items one through six?
Wait a minute.
I don't see that.
Where are you?
He's towards the end of the staff report where we carried on the sequoia exemption because we continued the hearing on it.
Right way to do it?
So, you could say items one through four as discussed with staff on pages, on page three of eight, and then...
Page five.
And then the findings and the conclusion from pages five and six.
So, is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Do we have a second?
A second then.
You have a second. All those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Claire. All right. Moving on.
Oh, nice.
Item number two.
Yes.
Project number 19-700, vesting tentative parcel map rezone, general plan amendment. Applicant is requesting to rezone one parcel currently zoned C2, commercial, community commercial along McHenry Avenue and Countrywood Lane into R1 for housing construction in the Westwood Country Division. Requesting a vesting, vesting tentative parcel map to divide the point 871... one acre area into three separate parcels, all facing Countrywood Lane. This project also requires a general plan amendment. This project qualifies for a sequo class thirty-two categorically, categorical exemption under section fifteen three three two infill development project. Staff?
Thank you, Chair. So, background of this property in two thousand thirteen, the two and a half acre area along McHenry Avenue and Countrywood Lane was parceled out and sold to allow for development of, and construction of the Dollar General Store and O'Reilly Auto Parts. The remaining area, approximately point eight seven acres, has remained vacant since. Over the years, the property owner was interested in developing multifamily housing at the location, but had difficulty penciling it out as an emergency access easement was needed, but there did not appear to be enough space to provide the easement and build enough units to make the project financially feasible. The property owner also had difficulty working in agreement with Dollar General on sharing access of their easement. In two thousand eighteen, Winward Pacific Builders purchased the remaining twenty-three lots of Westwood Country subdivision and began constructing new homes. To date, six have been completed and sold, and another six are currently under construction. Winward Pacific Builders is also constructing new homes in the cities of Oakdale and Houston. The rezone and general plan amendment, the parcel zoning classification is currently C two community commercial, and the land is designated in the city's general plan as commercial. The commercial zoning district is intended to encourage the continuance of a viable and predominantly pedestrian-oriented central business district for the city, and therefore the zone allows a wide variety of retail service, entertainment, and administrative activities which are necessary to serve a larger trading area than the city itself. That's right out of our general plan, just so you know. The commercial land use designation in the city's general plan further recognizes and interplay between commercial uses and residential uses. For example, commercial land use policies four and five encourage commercial development in residential areas that serve the needs of the area and impose development standards for the interface between commercial or offices' uses and residential uses through landscaped setbacks and masonry walls. The applicant is requesting to have the point eight seven acre area rezoned R one, low-density residential. The city's general plan, chapter seven land use, provides the following objectives as guidance in residential land use. A, ensure adequate land area is available for future housing needs. B, provide new residential areas that offer a variety of housing densities, types, sizes, costs, and locations to meet projected demand throughout the community. C, identify locations for multifamily developments which are accessible to transportation routes, commu, commercial areas, schools, and recreation facilities. D, the goal to enhance and maintain the quality of life in Escalon and to encourage a community identity and a pride in that identity. In accordance with the policies and standards of residential land use and general plan, chapter seven land use encourages that the city, one, give priority consideration to infill development of vacant and underutilized land within the city limits through expedited permit processing. Two, in reviewing proposals for changes in land use to or from a residential land use, a fiscal economic impact analysis shall be completed to ensure that the change is fiscally and economically beneficial to the city. The city shall also determine if the change will result in a residential land use inventory that is insufficient in meeting the city's regional housing needs allocation. Three, develop design measures to buffer residential development from non-residential land use. These measures, measures should at a minimum include setbacks, roadways, community waterways, landscaping, and landforms such as birmingham fences and walls. Four, future growth of the city shall conform to the growth management ordinance of the city of Escalon. The parcel area is an infill area. To the best of staff's knowledge, there's been no interest in developing it commercially by potential buyers. The city staff has made assumptions that perhaps there is no interest because it is located behind other retail establishments and lacks the ability to have a storefront along McHenry Avenue. The past interests in developing it as multifamily have also been difficult to develop due to the size and shape of the property, its location between commercial and residential uses, and the property not being able to secure an emergency access easement which is required for fire department access. We've also been advised by past potential buyers that multifamily does not appear to pencil out financially without the ability to construct multiple stories, which would require additional parking. The area is not, size is not adequate to provide for this. In terms of a fiscal economic impact analysis, the land has been vacant and underdeveloped for many years. Developed commercially would generate development impact and permit fees, property tax, and possibly sales tax, depending on the type of business. Developed as residential, it will generate development impact and permit fees and property taxes. Due to the residential use backing up to the commercial use, an eight-foot masonry wall is required and applied to the conditions of approval along with a landscape buffer. There is already an existing masonry wall located between the existing residential and commercial lands, as well as an eight-foot masonry wall at the rear of the property towards P and L Concrete. The growth established with the rezone will conform to the city's growth management ordinance. The applicant has already applied for allocations needed to fulfill the parcel map application, and it was approved by city council effective for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Based on, on the above general plan policy objectives for commercial and residential development in the city, including the recognized interplay between commercial and residential uses, staff finds that the proposed rezone is consistent with the city's general plan and recommends that if the rezone were approved, to also approve a general plan amendment on the application. Both the rezone and general plan recommendations from the planning commission will be presented to city council for review and approval. And also because the map is vesting, it will need to go to council as well. So because it's a whole package, we're just going to send the whole thing over to them for approval, much like it was presented today. The applicant has also submitted a vesting tentative parcel map to divide the land into three separate parcels, which would each house a single-family residential unit. Parcel one, ten thousand three hundred and sixty square feet adjacent to O'Reilly Auto Parts. Parcel two, ten thousand five hundred and fifty square feet where the temporary sales office location is currently for the remaining construction of the houses. And parcel three, seventeen thousand fifty-four square feet, which is the flag lot located behind parcel two, and that does include the corridor into that lot. Design standards, in accordance with the municipal code, the depth of lots shall not exceed the lot width by more than three times unless specifically authorized by the planning commission. In staff's review of the project, parcel three, which includes a corridor entrance approximately a hundred and fifty feet in length, exceeds the regulation, therefore requires specific approval from the planning commission to move forward with the map, parcel map application. And we don't see a problem with that. We have talked in accordance with the conditions of approval with all the other agencies, and there has not been an issue with that with anyone else either. In accordance with the municipal code regarding flag lots, flag lots for any proposed usage may be approved if either the flag lot is required by certain conditions and there is no alternative design for the development of the interior portions of excessively deep parcels, and that it will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. City staff finds this flag lot proposal acceptable and appropriate, given the circumstances of the property and that it will not be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare as it satisfies all other zoning requirements as specified below. The title seventeen corridor flag lot requirements in accordance with our zoning code requires that the corridor lot shall not be more than three hundred feet long nor less than twenty feet wide. The area of the corridor may not be applied towards satisfying the minimal lot line requirement. A corridor may not serve more than one lot. Lot frontage for the corridor lot is an exception to the frontage requirements in all zones. The flag lot, as proposed, meets the city's current zoning requirement. Chapter sixteen point oh five vesting tentative maps, the planning commission shall base its recommendation on the conformity of the map together with the provisions for its design and improvements to the requirements of the title, the zoning ordinance, the general plan, and any applicable specific plans and any other applicable ordinances, resolutions, or provisions of law. And we have listed the findings pursuant to the municipal code that require disapproval. A vesting tentative map may not be recommended for approval or conditional approval by the planning commission if it makes any of the following findings, that the proposed map is not consistent with the general plan or any applicable specific plans, that the design or improvement of the proposed subdivision is not consistent with the general plan and any other specific plans, that the site is not physically suitable for that type of development, that the site is not physically suitable for the proposed density of development, that the designs of the subdivision or proposed improvements are likely to cause substantial environmental damage or substantially and avoidably injure fish or wildlife in that habitat, that the design of the subdivision or type of improvements is likely to cause serious public health problems, and that the design of the subdivision or type of improvements will conflict with easements acquired by the public at large for access through or use of property within the proposed subdivision. The planning commission may recommend approval or condition, conditional approval of the map if it finds that alternative, alternate easements for access or use will be provided. This subsection shall apply only to easements of record or easements established by judgment of a court. There is an energy findings requirement. A vesting tentative map shall not be required, recommended for approval or conditional approval by the planning commission unless they find that the proposed subdivision meets the requirements of sixteen point oh two three hundred, which goes back to our vesting tentative. Regional housing needs, prior to the recommendation of approval or conditional approval for any tentative map, the planning commission must find that it has considered the effect of the map on the housing needs of the region and that these needs have been balanced against public service needs of the city's residents and available fiscal and environmental resources. After consideration, the planning commission, by the planning commission, the map along with the written report shall be forwarded to the city council for final action. And then I do list what the city council's action would be at that time. So in conclusion, staff finds that none of the above findings pose an issue with the proposed parcel map rezone or general plan amendment as the project is considered, is consistent with all zoning and other applicable municipal code requirements, and the project will be suitable for the particular area, property adjacent uses, uses, and public at large. Pursuant to the municipal code, the time limits and extensions thereof for filing of the final map, based on an approved vesting tentative map, shall be the same as for a tentative subdivision map. City council approval or conditional approval of a vesting tentative map shall confer a vested right to proceed with development in substantial compliance with the ordinances, policies, and standards in effect. At the time, the application for vesting tentative map is deemed complete and accepted and consistent with the government code. The rights conferred by this section shall expire if the city does not approve a final map prior to expiration of the vesting tentative map. The development rights conferred by vesting tentative map shall remain in effect for two years after recording of the final subdivision map. In regards to public outreach, notice of public hearing was published in the Escalon Times, and a copy of the notice was sent to every property owner and occupant within three hundred feet of the subject site as noted in the latest assessor's records. At the time of printing the staff report, staff received zero responses from the surrounding community as a result of the notice. Responses received by outside public agencies are incorporated into the conditions of approval. Environmental, we recommend a sequo class thirty-two categorical exemption for infill projects. The project meets the following criteria and is eligible for this exemption, which are pretty much similar to all the ones we've reviewed, consistence with the general plan, not affecting habitat or endangered species, and then it could be served adequately with all utilities. We have reviewed the comments received from all agencies and have put together the following items to serve as the proposed conditions of approval. Staff recommends that the planning commission review them and make their recommendation to the city council pending any modifications they may seek to include or remove. So we are open to any questions. Just as a note to the planning commission, Commissioner Sarkozy did contact us asking if he needed to remove himself from this item because he lives in the subdivision. He did not, he does not because he doesn't have a financial gain from it, and he's also more than five hundred feet away from the project location.
Right. Any questions or comments for staff before we open the public hearing?
I've got a couple. This isn't your typical infill, because we have to rezone this area for, so residential, I don't consider it a residential rezone. I look at it as a removal of stock for commercial development, and even though we haven't gotten anything proposed, I drove by it again tonight, and it's, it's a large piece of property. And I'm always looking to protect our commercial areas. I, I look at this map and where these buildings are going to be located, and quite frankly, I'm kind of shocked at the fire department that they didn't have any concerns about the extended driveway here. If there's a fire at parcel two, how'd a parcel three people get out? There's no other secondary removal or evacuation area. So I'm concerned about that. There, let's see. Don't start. I look at our planning document, as you were pointing out, the items. I, I don't know that there's been a study if there'll be any noise problems for parcel three with the echoing off the sound walls proposed and put in. I don't know that air movement won't be hampered by putting up all those walls and what kind of air quality will happen at that back parcel. And those are issues I have with, with giving a, an approval to this project. I don't think we've been shown that that's not, how that's not going to be a problem. There's additionally, there's nothing in here that says any of these will be limited to one story. So obviously, we wouldn't want them overlooking the neighbors, maybe here, I guess, on Swanson. And are the, I had a question for staff. Is the Dollar General and O'Reilly's part of the Westwood Country LLC?
Yes, they are.
So, so that's a continuation with this project here, because if you left it C two, then whoever was going to move in there would be part of that. And the developer's going to approve LLC for these three or didn't need to?
It's already on the parcels.
It's already on the parcel, okay.
In response to your.
That was environmental that I was talking about, number D. Says approval of the project would not result in any significant effects relating to traffic noise, air quality, or water quality. I don't know about water quality, but how do you know that there won't be any significant effects? That, that place is stuck in the back. There's, I have a concern about that. I, I don't know that I'd want to be back there. It's, it's a use of property, yep. So I have concerns about that. And I haven't, by reading this, I'm not assuaged that there's a good reason to approve parcel three. Since they are part of the LLC, did the twenty-three homes have to, did they pay in lieu fees rather than conform to any low to moderate income housing requirements?
The Westwood subdivision was subdivided prior to adoption of our affordable housing ordinance, so they were not subject to our inclusionary housing requirements.
And so any future development that they did, because there was such a lapse between building new, they wouldn't be.
Yeah, they were, they were already subdivided prior to that, so it does not apply to them.
Okay. And I know the three don't meet that threshold.
No, and they, yeah, they still don't meet the threshold.
Okay. Well, those were some of my questions.
Commissioner Sarkozy?
No, I don't have any questions at this point.
Commissioner Willis?
Well, I too had a concern about safety for parcel three, and it was mentioned that an apartment building wasn't going to work because it only had one way in and out. So a residence there doesn't need more than one way in or out, that was concerning to me. And a lack of willingness to, to give up a lot on Swanson for a second easement to the back, and that concerned me. On page twelve, it talks about a gate access. So there's a gate for the flag lot, but not for the first, the front two, it's just for the back.
The front two will, will be on the street, so they'll just meet our setback requirement for garage and structure. The flag lot is put on, he's, he's offered to put the gate there because it's supposed to be a private driveway in the aspect that it's a driveway only for that house.
So the gate's in the front?
The gate would be in the front, yeah.
And then what is it that's behind parcels one and two and three? Is there?
It would be a six-foot wood fence.
Yeah, I like, I'm in favor of infill two, and I like making use of space. I'm just not sure this is the best way to go.
Commissioner Castellanos?
I had a question on parcel number two, along the easement or the flag lot portion. That's all going to be fenced?
No, no, it'd just be a gate blocking...
No, I mean...
Oh.
Along the driveway. Yeah, the perimeter of that property. So it'd be, I guess along the driveway would be the west easterly boundary of that site would have a fence on it then?
It would probably have the standard three-foot fence until you hit the fifteen-foot setback, and then it would bump up to the six-foot. So, and that could be whether they want to put in wrought iron wood, either of those are, any of those are fine. And that's what the requirement that we had on the prior application, where we have that three-foot minimum, so it would be three-foot tall if they chose to put it in. And then they could either gradually upgrade to six feet, or they could jump it up to the six feet.
So right now, on the, I guess it'd be the westerly boundary of parcel number three, there is no fence. Right now, there's nothing there? It's open?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I have a concern too about if there's a fire, how do they get out? There's no access.
And I can address the fire department issue. Battalion Chief Panero came in, sat down with me, re-reviewed this parcel map, explained to him what the lot dimensions are, where the houses would be placed. He initially had concerns about parcel three because of the long driveway. However, it is twenty-five feet wide, which is the standard for fire department, so he was pleased with that. Parcel three, his concern was kind of a lack of turnaround. However, he said, since the houses are going to be fire sprinklered, which is required by building code, he's fine with that. He said if the, if, you know, it's not required, but if the corridor for parcel three is gated, either up farther or up towards the front of the entrance by Countrywood Drive, if it's gated, they need to have the access code. But the fact that they would have code for access if they needed to drive in there, it is twenty-five feet wide, so they could access it, and the houses fire sprinklered, he was, he accepted this plan, he was fine with it.
And that was added into our conditions under the fire department. And then Commissioner Danziger had asked or made a comment regarding single-story, second-story houses. Because there are second-story houses that are going to be built along that, we just don't know what models yet, and some of those areas along that backside where the residential portion is, we have added into the conditional, the conditions of approval that they, that our second-story standards are listed in there, so that if it was a second, a two-story, which in accordance with our municipal code, they don't, they don't have any issues with that because those houses are being built right now as opposed to be, already being there existing five years ago or so. He would just, if that issue did occur where those houses are up prior to these being built, he would follow our second-story building standards, which have things like the fogged window, obscured windows, that type of thing, so...
You're talking about APNs twenty-seven through thirty and number zero-one? And that, of those particular areas, so those homes are currently being built?
They're not, they're, if they're not already, I don't believe those ones specifically are being built right now, but they are planned to be developed in the next year to probably twelve to eighteen months.
I can probably answer any questions.
Okay, yeah, come on, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, you're open, yeah.
Any other questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, let's open the public hearing at eight fifty-two. As a reminder, if you come to the podium, please state your name and your address.
Hello, my name is Troy Wright. I'm principal with Windward Pacific Builders, and my address is one thirty-five South Fifth Avenue in Oakdale. I guess the question is, yes, we did buy, we purchased all twenty-three lots from the Spivix or Papyrus LLC last year. We're, as Dominic said, we're sold six, we're under construction with those six. Back probably three years ago, I looked at developing this current commercial piece with the Spivix and came up with all kinds of different variations, including an apartment complex and whatever else. And because of the odd configuration of the parcel, I just couldn't make it work. And because PNL, you know, there was multiple reasons, but one was a secondary access with multiple units, and somebody stated that, well, I was concerned, there was concern about, well, the fire department with access, well, an access with one lot is different than an access with twenty-four units on a secondary deal. And so we either had to come up with this EVA with, through the subdivision that we're developing now, PNL Concrete, or through Dollar General. PNL Concrete didn't want to do it, neither Dollar General. So we were stuck with doing a twenty-foot EVA possibly through our subdivision. And I thought the best deal was for us to purchase this and put three nice lots on it and get rid of the EVA issue. And this is not uncommon, you know, these are great lots, we're very willing to put the eight-foot wall up. You know, they're all, I think they're what, seven thousand, eight thousand square foot Or more.
Yeah.
I think the back, the back one is big, very large.
And the first two are over ten.
Yeah, so I mean, these are nice lots. I don't think there's going to be any issue with things. Like I said, I've been doing this for thirty years, and this is a pretty good situation. I think, what was the other issue with, like I said, multifamily just didn't work. We did try to do a multifamily project. I think I've talked to Dominic and other people at the city for the last couple of years about it, and just, it just didn't pencil for one way or another. So this was a good, easy way to get it done and take care of the situation, so. And it fits into our building plan. And I think we're doing a great job at Westwood Country. I think our product far exceeds the rest of the neighborhood, and so I think we're doing a great job. We're happy to be here, so.
Was there a point where you were considering one of the lots on Swanson, facing Swanson, as fire department access?
Yeah, well, that we would have had to burn a lot, basically, yeah.
And we'd heard from staff quite a while ago that that was, you know, a major consideration. They were kind of happy that that was being proposed, but then it, then it went away.
Well, because that would have been, and where that was, was going to be an issue of the EVA, so was going to be very close to where Countrywood is. So the proximity of that second access would have been a problem. And that would have impacted the development configuration of a multifamily project.
Well, I'm talking again on Swanson there. You would conceivably, it would have either been two-two-seven, sixty-eight, twenty-eight, or twenty-nine. I don't know what...
Well, you're talking about if I was to do that with a multifamily project?
No, as a, an access.
No, but that wouldn't be the case, we wouldn't need to do that with a three-lot subdivision.
It's only required the secondary access for multi.
So it was strictly multifamily?
Multifamily project.
And multifamily didn't pencil out, you actually, it's more economically beneficial to you to have three homes versus apartment?
Yes.
Apartment complex? Why, how much difference is that? I'm just curious.
Well, it just didn't work, just because of building permits and everything else and the cost of construction. And it just wouldn't have, it just, it just didn't work for several reasons, economically.
Almost an answer, all right.
No, that's quite, quite a bit of the answer. If you have to pay for something and it, and you, and you can't make it work financially on the end, because I rent the properties out, it doesn't work.
Not arguing that, but I asked, what was the cost difference there? And you don't have that at the tip of your tongue here, apparently. I don't know what it costs to do a multifamily unit, and we're sensitive to that. And, you know, we're seeing three homes here, and maybe we have an issue with that back lot with the air and noise.
What's, what's the air issue?
Well, you're going to be blocked off on three sides.
It's not, you know, to me, I've, like I said, I've done this before, and there's really no air issue. I mean, this, these things, this is an eighty-three, I think eighty-three-foot wide lot by a hundred and thirty-foot depth. So it's a pretty good-sized lot, and you're a six-foot frontage on wood fences in the front. I don't think there's an air issue.
Well, most homes aren't surrounded by an eight-foot masonry block wall, individual house. CCRs, you, have you gotten those up for this project? Are they the same as Westwood Country?
That would be, yeah.
Does that allow secondary or additional dwelling units in any of those properties?
You know, it's per code, it's per your city standards, yeah.
Well, I'm not, I'm just wondering what the CCRs say.
Well, I think...
They differ.
Well, okay, but the CCR, we're not going to build any, we're going to build a house. Currently, what we're doing now, we've had master plan through your city, and we're not responsible for anybody who buys the house after the fact. They'll still have to come through you if they want to do any secondary units. And they'll have to be built per code and built through setbacks.
Well, one of, one of the issues that we're facing after you leave tonight, ADUs, is the state has, you know, set out legislation that wants to take away these planning issues away from staff and, well, not staff, but the planning commission. And I live in a development that has CCRs and doesn't allow that.
Okay, well...
Doesn't allow you to convert garages, doesn't allow you to convert...
Okay, well, we have general disclosure statements that we sell with, we provide to all our buyers with a long list of everything else that includes the CCRs. They all have to read it and sign it and understand what the CCRs are, okay? And understand that anything that they do over and above buying our house, they have to go through the city to get approval on whatever they do.
Okay, so I'll ask staff, have they provided CCRs?
We're assuming they're going to be the same ones from Westwood Country, which we have them probably in our files original from Windward, and we conditioned it to...
Are they going to be affected by this new ordinance?
No, so on to our number item three, you did ask me to contact the city attorney regarding that, and it's our understanding that the current ADU legislation, as state mandated, does not contain anything specifically limiting private CCRs for ADUs specifically. So in that context, we would treat them the same that it's being treated now, whereas that's an issue, that's a private document. We don't recognize it as the city will approve you in accordance with the state mandated law or ADU ordinance, but if there's a regulation specific to CCRs that is related to ADU, they need to deal with that as a civil matter, and they would have to make the option at that point whether or not they want to do it or not.
Well, and perfect example of that is that we actually, when we first started, okay, we had CCRs that stated that we had certain setbacks that were not city standard, okay? And they were recorded, but city had stated that, well, we don't recognize that, okay? So you can't do those setbacks. So we had to go back to the drawing board and set the houses accordingly, okay? And so we did what we had to do. So we're going by city standard, and so we're not, we're not fluctuating for that. I mean, whatever the municipal code says, we're abiding by that.
Yeah, we don't have an ordinance for it yet. We're in the process of looking, reviewing, and...
Okay, but you have municipal codes as far as setbacks and everything you do right now, currently, okay?
But a lot of that's going to go away.
Well, but you're still going to have municipal codes.
Just in regard, just, a lot of that's going to be amended or updated specific to accessory dwelling units, which right now this project's not proposing.
Well, I understand.
Yeah, so no, I just wanted to say...
You know, he's done, they're sold, he's gone. We have these, these buildings here, and then ten years from now, people say, hey, you know, I want to get some extra income here and start building apartments where they have multifamily units there, where it didn't pencil out for him, but you could end up with that in these lots.
With existing houses on it?
Yeah.
Are you wanting the conditions of, or the CCRs to include a statement, no ADUs allowed?
Well, I was curious as to what they actually say.
Oh.
And I don't like to step on people's rights when they, when they buy your house, they have to sign off and agree to those CCRs. And by doing that, if the neighbor decides, well, now I can put up a, I'm, that person is adhering to the CCRs, the next-door neighbor says, hey, I've got a seventeen thousand square foot lot here, I'm going to put up a couple of, you know, tough sheds, you know, fit them out, and we'll put, put some homes in there like that, and just, and it junk things up, you know, it's...
But you can't do that because you're rezoning this property to a R1. This is part of this application.
And the ADU ordinance does specify one ADU unit per lot.
Okay, let's go back to the task at hand. Do we have any comments on this, comments not related to the ADUs, ADU ordinance?
I just want to make sure. So like the, the part of the, where lot one and two are, that didn't pencil out to put an apartment building there, and then maybe have carports in the back where lot three is, and even two-story or whatever, be a buffer between the commercial and the houses.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. When you build these homes, are you going to have some sort of, I don't know what the, the notification from, to the buyers that there may be noise associated with the commercial property?
Yes. Well, a perfect example is currently, okay, right now, we're backed up. I have lots against this commercially zoned project, okay? And it's an eight-foot wall, okay? I disclose all that, this is a commercial piece of property, okay? You know, I spent a lot of money on attorneys and everything else, and I know what I'm doing. And so bottom line, there's disclosure going on with all these deals. And now, this is not even part of my building plan yet, obviously, because it's not done. But now they have an eight-foot wall against three lots. So it's very private, and there'll be another eight-foot wall that I build against commercial, and it'll be the same disclosure.
Well, the reason why I say that, because we've had experience in town that there's a, a non-residential operation going on, a new subdivision comes in.
Yeah.
All the neighbors come in and they scream about, hey, they're making all this noise and...
Right.
Kind of like right to farm.
Well, yeah, no, it's, it's right to farm, and it's all, yeah, it's all disclosures. I have to, you know, disclose that I got an airport so many miles away from me, I got a railroad, you know, we got railroad issues, we have to disclose all that stuff. So it's, you know, it's very intensely disclosed.
Are you going to be, any of these lots going to be two stories?
Possibly, yeah.
And then you are aware of...
Yes.
Okay.
And I own all the lots there, so it doesn't, you know, I have control of all those lots right now.
Any other questions? Commissioner Sarkozy?
I guess the only, so is there a reason, you've got that, and it's more for aesthetics, I guess, is there any reason that you would need to keep that existing concrete wall behind the five lots?
Well, other than it costs me money to tear it down.
Yeah, I'm just, curiosity more than anything, just so that you don't get that box in field.
Well, you know, obviously, I'd personally rather have a concrete wall than a wood fence, so it'll last forever.
It's taller, too, it's the eight feet instead of the six.
And it, you know, it's all about noise, right? So you're, now you're, you don't have any noise against your neighbors.
Any other questions? No. I have a very simple question, staff. What is a vesting tentative map?
So a vesting tentative map is related to fees. So when you're vesting, as soon as the application map is deemed complete, which was, is specific to the city saying, we've reviewed this, these are the comments we have, and we forward it to planning commission, so it would be this month of June. it to Planning Commission, so it would be this month of June, um, it, it freezes all of the fees and application processes for that map. So at this point, because it was deemed complete enough to be brought to Planning Commission for the review and approval, the development impact fees, as they are existing, and permit fees, building permit fees, all of that stuff freeze.
Okay.
Yeah.
The only other condition I'd like to, uh, explore would be, um, you know, there is a sewer and water and storm drain easement through the property, which, uh, follows the twenty-foot, uh, access point for Lot Three, and into Dollar General and whatnot. And rather than to put a bunch of trenches in, uh, country wood, uh, work with Bill Cole and try to figure out a way not to do that, so, um, you know, because I do, know it does state that we have to pull off, and I think the intent is to trench all that street, and I, I'd rather not do it if I don't have to, so.
I just have a, an overall comment, um, and that is, thank you for your patience and your time this evening. I know that the last item took longer than what we all expected. Um, I fully support your project. I think it's, uh, makes good use of land, um, and it makes good sense. I believe it's a win-win, it's a win for you, it's a win for the city. As far as concerns regarding secondary access, hey, if, if Battalion Chief reviewed this with staff and has no issues, uh, they're the firefighting authority, and we're just planning commissioners, and they're, and if there was an emergency, they would have to respond. So if they were okay with it, I, and I'd see no issue.
Yeah, well, and, and to kind of follow up with that, as far as I believe that we would do, if there was a gate there, uh, the gate to access that parcel would be set off the street to where at least one car could sit in the driveway and access the code. Okay, so, I mean, so that same distance would be what you would set back on in your fence line, so it'd be probably fifteen, twenty feet, so.
So it would not be right at the frontage of-
Wouldn't, wouldn't be right on the road, so where somebody's sitting on a road-
Right.
-to access this thing, so.
And as far as traffic control, I think that makes perfect sense-
Right.
-because you don't want somebody just sitting on-
Well, you, you know, you don't.
Waiting for the gate to open.
You know, we build gated communities all over, and that's kind of, you know, how we kind of operate, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Any other questions for our applicant?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from our public? Thanks. With that, we will close the public hearing at nine twelve. Comments, questions for staff?
Well, my, my only comment is, is, is that I think it's highly unlikely that there would be any businesses going in there, um, just because of the, like you said, the access to McHenry, uh, since the appropriate access to get to those lots is off of country wood, which is odd to come into, um, for any businesses. In fact, when they, O'Reilly's has a entrance there off of country wood, I thought that was kind of odd, having a business access on that. So it, it seems totally appropriate to, um, convert this to residential.
Can I just make a comment with the Spiviks on the crossway? I just, this is my-
Can you reopen the public hearing?
Sure. We will reopen the public hearing at nine fourteen.
Um, the Spiviks own the parcel across the street, okay? And, you know, it's another commercial piece, very similar in size, and they're having a heck of a problem with people trying to buy the depth. And it's a similar deal that we're fa, you know, they're faced with, they had to parcel it off, and they, they're talking to me about the same kind of deal that we're talking about here. So that's, they're having a hard time with commercial users with the depth of those properties. Anyway, I just wanted to say that.
We will close the public hearing at nine fourteen. Okay. Commissioner Danzinger.
I said what I was going to say, I'm going to say.
Commissioner Willis?
Well, I do like the homes that are going up on Deborah Court and Deborah Circle. It's, it's a nice product. I feel somewhat reassured by staff's, uh, comments from the Battalion Chief, but I would not buy Number Three if it's, I don't know, it scares me. Um, but the property doesn't lend itself to anything else, and based on what Mr. Wright just said, if we get three houses there, who's to say there won't be two or three houses across the street behind a commercial establishment to be maybe a gateway to, uh, Country Wood I guess I don't really have, uh, an objection.
Okay.
Not in love with it, but.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Well, I was really, really concerned when Dollar General went in and built on the front part of that and had this, what I thought was going to be a vacant lot forever. So I am excited to think that you've come up with a plan to develop it that can be put to use, so I, I'm happy to, that this thing worked out. I was just wondering what, who's going to build behind a, you know, store? So, I'm, it's a good thing.
We may see Mr. Wright coming to talk about the south side of Country Wood. Okay.
Better bare land sitting around.
I, I would agree.
I do want to acknowledge, as being a neighbor in the existing construction zone, I appreciate the, um, the workers are very pleasant as we, as we walk by, and, uh, most notably, no nails in the tires. Definitely appreciate that.
I appreciate that.
And with all due respect, um, I mean, this is not my neighborhood, but it means a lot to me to have, um, my fellow, the support of this project from one of my fellow planning commissioners, because this is in his neighborhood, and if he supports the project, then so do I. Okay, with that, do we have, um, well, let's see, do we have to, can we get to my page? So we opened the public hearing, we closed the public hearing, and do we have a motion for recommendation to recommend this map? Or first, we have to make, have a motion to make a recommendation to City Council to find that the project is Class Thirty-two categorically exempt? And we need a motion, uh, to make the following finding and recommendation to City Council to change the zoning from a C-two community commercial to R-one low res, low-density Consider a motion to make the following findings per, as required in Chapter sixteen point oh five of the municipal code and approve the vesting tentative parcel map. Consider a motion to approve the conditions of approval as presented. I don't believe we add any modifications from the Planning Commissioner unless, uh, one of the fellow commissioners has a modification, as well as a motion to approve a general plan amendment in accordance with the rezone recommendation.
Will one motion take care of all that?
Uh, yeah, so your one motion would take care of all these things, because it, it is not staff's, um, interpretation that you've changed anything in this. So if you haven't made any changes to any of the conditions, if there isn't anything additionally imposed or modified, it would be making a recommendation to approve all of these.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for staying.
Next item.
Need to mark mine next time. There we go.
All right, does anybody need to take a short recess? Okay, we're going to put the meeting on hold for-
You did.
-a few minutes.
All right.
Taking a break?
Yes.
I supposed to?
Yes.
All right, item number four, Project Nineteen dash six-nine-eight zoning code ordinance amendment. This item is continued from the May fourteenth, twenty nineteen Planning Commission. That is, to consider making a recommendation to the Escalon City Council, amending Escalon Municipal Code Section Seventeen point four-one point one-four-zero, excuse me, regarding accessory dwelling units, otherwise known as ADUs, formerly referenced to as secondary dwelling units. Sequo categorically exempt pursuant to Public Resources Code Section Twenty-one zero-eight-zero point one-seven.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so this item, um, is obviously continued from the last meeting. We had a lot of discussion, um, regarding the item, a lot of review of, of the state mandated requirements and the sections, um, that the city is required to update into their code, and what areas we're allowed to maintain some flexibility and control in. There were some items, um, that were continued from the last meeting regarding affordable housing deed restrictions, uh, regarding, uh, private CCRs, and regarding enforcement of owner occupancy restrictions. So as, as stated in the last item regarding the CCRs, um, that the private land use controls through CCRs and land use controls through local government zoning often exist concurrently. Uh, so a zoning ordinance that allows a certain use does not override or, uh, or abrogate a, uh, private covenant condition or restriction. That being said, um, it's, it's our understanding that ADU legislation does not contain anything specifically limiting private CCRs for ADUs. Um, so, as originally stated in how the city is currently responds to CCRs, we have no role in, in enforcing them, um, as, uh, that, that type of restriction, because it's private and it derives no benefit, uh, we don't derive any benefits from that private restriction. Um, so it's our understanding for now, it doesn't address that, so CCRs would be in, in effect. And like that's been mentioned before with CCRs, um, they're filed on the property. Typically, um, the CCRs that I've seen, um, take people and create some type of advisory committee, um, and so if somebody is doing something at their house, um, it's a civil private matter to where the property owners in the neighborhood have to either get together, put the advisory committee that is responsible for those CCRs on notice, and give them a certain day to either rectify the situation, um, or take care of it, and then in absence of no response, you would then basically move forward, whichever groups wish to pursue it, hire an, an attorney, ensuing that person civilly to either remove whatever issue they're violating, address it, um, or, or sue them monetarily. Um, so that's, those are the type of CCRs I've seen more frequently in the past. I haven't, I haven't read their whole CCR in, in a long time, so I'm not sure specifically what one words would, would say, but at this point in time, the ADU law has no, uh, relation to that. Um, in conformance with or your, your questioning regarding enforcement of owner occupancy restrictions, um, our attorney really didn't have any feedback, other than most places address that on a complaint-based system. So it would be, basically be, you know, if you're putting in that type of restriction, we're having it, you know, filed in the, uh, as a, as a restriction on the deed, on the title of the property, however, it's really not something you would enforce unless you basically came about it in code enforcement issues, and that's typically how we address things. Um, you, she did say, if you did want to move forward with it, work forward with it, you could ask for proof of residency, um, on an annual basis. Um, she does have experience with some cities asking, um, for like a tax return or an affidavit stating that they're living in one of the, um, units on the property, um, but most cities don't typically operate that way, or don't have the staffing to be able to maintain something like that and keep up on it. Um, and then there is the option of monitoring rental websites, but it's labor-intensive. Um, so it's just one of those things that if we did move forward with putting that type of restriction into our municipal code, it would most likely be on a, on a complaint basis approach, so. Um, and then the other item was regarding affordable housing deed restrictions. Um, overall affordability requirement is problematic, um, so it's our understanding it wasn't something that was recommended, um, although it's well-intentioned, um, it's our understanding that, that it wouldn't be something we'd want to require, um, because it complicates or prevents renting an ADU to family and friends, um, specifically maybe a family member that's trying to move, like their mother-in-law, or have an in-law unit where they're having their parents stay in them. or have an in-law unit where they're having their parents stay in them. And then it thwarts two policy objectives of the ADU statute, which are increasing the number of housing units on the market and then allowing people a way to better afford their homes. So basically, it's like an additional, it's our understanding it's an additional red tape that could possibly stop somebody from maybe even moving forward with constructing or pulling a permit for an ADU because they would need to deed restrict it affordable, which would limit their ability and how much they would charge rent and also condition them to go through the process to make sure that that person qualifies, which would maybe not even be an interest to somebody doing it, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
I thought the intent on these EDUs was to streamline everything for affordable housing. So how is the municipality able to, you know, monitor if these are becoming affordable housing if there's no deed restrictions on it?
So the state of California in enacting this code legislation is basically stating that they're affordable because they're not a single-family residential home and they're considered a smaller unit on taking up a smaller portion of land. Therefore, they should cost more than what it would cost to rent a house of that size or taking up just the portion, just the...
That's what I have a problem with.
Yeah.
It's the terminology here. Affordable housing to a housing plan is different than what somebody is saying is affordable cost-wise. I don't like those two getting intermingled here. So if we're going to use affordable housing opportunity, then we need to adhere to our housing plan. If you want to say that it's, you know, less costly market, you know, value, you know, say that, but don't call it affordable housing because that's not, that's why we brought up deed restrictions.
Yeah.
And there's nothing that I've seen here so far that doesn't say an RV can't be an ADU. Could park that on your lot there right next to your fence and you could have whomever live in that. Is that true?
Not in this code, no. So just to make sure that it's accessory dwelling unit, so it's a secondary unit, which is therefore implied by the state to be of lesser value, lesser cost, therefore should be charged lesser rent. And that's how they're playing it affordable. But yes, it, we don't know for sure if it's going to meet that restriction because obviously the market can get involved. And if there's a need for housing, then yeah, that's how the market works. If there's a lack of housing in the area, people are able to increase their rents. So they're not, they're not specifically calling it affordable housing. They're enacting this legislation to provide more affordable housing instead of like easing the restrictions so that more people put the accessory dwelling in in hopes that that will assist with providing more affordable options, I guess. It's a better option than people looking for rent and they're having to rent a whole entire house and pay $2,000 a month rent for a house when they don't need, and that's all that's available, 2,000 square foot, I can't afford it, where they could find something 700, 800 square feet. Maybe they're not thrilled with the size, but the rent is more likely to be within their area of affordability. But yeah, they're not specifically calling it affordable. It's not an affordable dwelling unit. It's an accessory dwelling unit that by their description and how they're regulating it, should be more affordable than a standard home.
So I have one comment, and that is I believe that our constituents throughout the city do not want to see many of these ADUs popping up everywhere. However, I think it should be noted that by passing this ordinance, it allows for the city and us as planning commissioners and for city council to adhere or to enforce some regulations through it in ordinance that otherwise we would be mandated to follow the state law.
Which is the minimum, yeah.
And so for anybody watching the YouTube video now or five years from now, just understand that everybody's hands are kind of tied on this particular issue. And while we're not, while I'm not in favor of it, I think this shows that, and I appreciate all the work that staff has been doing on this because it shows us actually trying to have a little bit more control over it as opposed to just following the standard state law, which is the default. So we're forced to do something, and this is staff's recommendation to do something. Otherwise, we do nothing and then we're following the state and everybody knows how we feel about increased state regulation.
And as indicated at the last Planning Commission meeting, I mean, we went with opening our code as minimally as we can. Especially at our level, we're very, we want to enforce the municipal code because it's there. It was approved for a reason, it's there for a reason. And obviously, when items come up that need to be reviewed or relooked at, we take a look at them then. So obviously, if this was posing an issue later on and we had tons of applications coming in that didn't like something and there was the ability for us to be more flexible in that area, as we've advised before, we'd bring that to your attention. And that at that point, it would be up to Planning Commission whether or not they would want to consider opening that up at that time or providing additional flexibility in the code and we could make those changes. But at this time, we're doing what the state is requiring at a minimum.
I just have one question.
Sure.
And I know we've been talking about updating to the housing element, but if we pass this ordinance, then can we add this to our availability for affordable housing within the housing element?
So it would be new construction. I'm trying to think when I filled out the last, when I did the annual report this year. I'm, I would think that this next round, they're going to be asking for secondary dwellings due to the state increasing this. We already get people contacting us, public records requests, asking about how many we've issued, how many we've done this last year. So they'll probably modify. So I'm assuming they're going to ask how many accessory dwellings and we would be able to report it. So typically, what we did with the last ones that we had, which were the eight houses that we completed last year for the 2018 Housing Element Update, we based their value off of how they were valued for building valuation, so how much it costs to construct them. Because that was what was available at the time because we have some that are currently issued and then currently in finalized, so.
Now, if I'm reading this correctly, jurisdictions may require, I'm looking on page four, may require one of the units to be owner occupied, and I still am opposed to that. And case in point was the case we had last month. The guy who lived, I don't remember where, but he had the units on Roosevelt and he didn't live in either one of the units. And I just think that you have property managers watching property, you're retired, you're traveling around in your RV. I don't think, I don't think that should be required. And as far as prohibiting short-term rentals, I just, you know, you have somebody that you have to place in a home and where are they going to stay while their home is being sold or something? And you might want somebody in there for less than 30 days. And so it kind of scares me, but I definitely don't know that we need to require the owner on the site.
Yeah, and that was just an optional requirement. We wanted to let you know that it is optional. We could move forward in that direction, but if it's not something the Planning Commission's interested in, we don't have to move forward.
Well, I don't like the whole thing, so it's kind of moot.
I'm sure I'm going to get the same response from our council as well. I mean, a lot of state mandated stuff is...
Absolutely. It sounds as though, through the discussion you're having here, and again, I mirror your thoughts. Appreciate all the work you did. This has nothing to do with you. State laws come down and they're just, you know, trying to do something that, you know, maybe not sits well with a community. But it sounds like all the discussion that we had, that we wanted to, whether we make property owners stay there or not, but that we had with you is have we, are we going to add any of that to this ordinance? Or are we just taking the ordinance as it's required by law?
Currently, it's not included in the ordinance. I did not put it in there, I left it there as an option. So the ordinance that's amended and has all of the red lines in it or blue lines, I think they came out as. And then a version of the clean draft does not have the occupancy restriction in there, does not have affordable housing deed restriction in there, and doesn't have anything addressing CCNRs.
So we have absolutely no say it's going to come down just as it was handed to you?
No, there is, there's differences in ours versus...
Yeah, no, there is differences in ours.
Okay, well, what are the differences?
Sorry, because we went over that last meeting, so I thought we were, okay. So the difference is, let me, understood your question.
I probably didn't present it wrong.
While you do that research, can I ask?
I was just thinking about that occupancy, yeah.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
So how does this tie in with our slow-growth ordinance? So we still have our slow-growth ordinance, but yet now we're required to do this ADU requirement. So which supersedes, the ADU or the slow-growth ordinance?
So the slow-growth ordinance or the growth management ordinance is specific to single-family residential. So these are accessory dwellings that would basically just require a permit to be pulled, so it wouldn't be subject to a slow growth.
So they're exempt from the...
They're just not clearly documented in there because they're accessory dwelling units, not single-family residential. They're accessory to the primary and our growth management only addresses primary.
Well, we may want to look at the growth management ordinance to tie in ADUs into the growth management.
How does that work with, is it going to have a separate property address? Oh, we got it, wouldn't...
Typically, when you address a second unit, because it's one lot, one parcel, say it's 2060 McHenry for the primary, and when you add a second unit, you now have 2060 McHenry A and 2060 McHenry B because your lot is 2060. So now you have an A and a B.
Does it have to be detached to be B? Or can it be, is the garage B?
It can be attached.
It could be attached. If it's legally permitted, we're going to assign it a unit number so that we can see it.
Do we allow currently garage conversions?
If they meet our code requirements.
But here, if you look at page B, it says pursuant to the provisions, blah, 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 except this does not include a garage.
What section are you on?
Well, B, the rewriting of the...
Are you talking about the blacked-out one or the...
The clean version.
The clean version. It says interior habitable area of a dwelling unit, including basements and attics, but does not include a garage. And then two, three pages later, it says no setback shall be required for an existing garage that is converted to an accessory dwelling unit. So I'm confused by that. It sounds like it's telling me you can't convert a garage and then it's making the requirements, how to convert it. On this...
Still looking for B.
It doesn't have a page number. It's just the new, the rewritten ordinance.
Where was the first one that you were saying?
Under section three, it says pursuant to the provisions of, and then it says the interior habitable area of a dwelling unit, including basements and attics, but does not include a garage or any accessory structure. It's in government ease, I don't know if I'm understanding it correctly or not. But then you go over to number three, three pages later, and it says no setback shall be required for an existing garage that is converted to an accessory dwelling unit.
So with that section, under section three, where it started pursuant to the provisions, it says may be constructed or placed within the living area, which includes basements and attics, but does not includes a garage or any accessory structure. That's because originally constructed garages and most accessory structures are not constructed for living space. So that's where the conversion would come in. So they're saying that you can construct it or place it within a living area which is the interior habitable area of a dwelling unit, but they're not including garage or accessory because those are not originally permitted as a living area. So you'd have to convert it into the living area first, which would require a permit. And then we would require the city to review it and make sure it meets the ordinance requirement.
So it's like the guy that brings in his Harley and parks it in his living room and wants to convert that to a living space and he's saying, no, it's his garage.
Yeah, I mean, it's just not, it's not, it wasn't permitted for that function. A garage is not an area that's supposed to be lived in, meaning sleeping quarters, that type of thing. So you'd convert it legally into that to be able to provide the dwelling unit.
But they're including attics as habitable space?
You can, I mean, and that's, I think that's subject to how the house is built. Some attic, some older houses have attic space that may, that could have been done that way or finished, and some basements have finished.
Or they can add on.
Yeah.
They live in the garage and the attic.
If you flip that page over, number 11, no structure containing dwelling units located within 50 feet of a public road or street. Is an alley a public road or street? So that the rear of the building faces a public road or street? I mean, isn't...
So in that instance, and I, and we did discuss that with the attorney, our code specifies that the front of the house has to face the street. So this is something that's state mandated to be into the ordinance but wouldn't apply to us because we already regulate that the front of the house has to face the street. So they wouldn't be able to construct their accessory dwelling unit and have the back door facing the rear of the property. It would need to face the front of the property or at least the side of the property. At some point, they couldn't face the alleyway. We would make them, maybe they have a secondary door, but the main entrance would always need to face the street.
Can I apply for a variance on that?
So we would have to give a yes or no answer, like periods.
It's been the devil's...
No, I know. But that's the whole reasoning behind this is they want it to be ministerial to the point where you're either saying yes or no. And so we put everything in here and that's why we included all the development standards, all of this, all of that, because there shouldn't be anything they need to apply for a variance for. They either meet the requirements and we issue the permit or they don't meet the requirements and we don't issue the permit.
So I have another question. So would an accessory building be subject to the school tax? You what? The school tax?
School district fee.
On a per-square-foot basis?
If it's over 500 square feet, it would. And all of them would be subject to the fire fee.
So would you have to have the sprinklers?
Now, that in here, there's regulation according to that, that if the primary house doesn't have it and it's attached, then they would not be required to put it in. But that if it was a new detached building, and there's certain, there's certain criteria on whether they'd need to sprinkler it or not.
I just think it's like, you know, you have a house that was built in 1950 and then somebody wants to come in and build an ADU. If they want to build an ADU, they have to meet 2019 code, so.
Yeah, so in most cases, they're probably going to have to sprinkler it because that's more of a health and safety thing as opposed to trying to lessen the affordability or increase affordability.
I like the concept of facilitating the process, you know, having it at the staff level and making it easier. I'm also thinking of, you know, you hear stories about 26-year-old, 30-year-old, 50-year-old still living at home with mom and dad. And so a secondary dwelling unit or whatever is a handy thing for them to have. I'm not sure you're going to be swamped with applications, but for you to have to be able to handle that. And then plus the criteria being near transit, being near this, you know, a lot of it just doesn't apply to Escalon. But I can see some of the reasoning behind it. I'm curious to see how it goes.
Yeah, and we've all discussed it as well, a lot of this... Yeah, and, and we've all discussed it as well, a lot of this, most of this regulation is pointed more towards bigger cities with higher populations, more housing, limited space for housing, and just, and really, really active transportation systems. And we don't, we don't have any of that, so it, it honestly, it, in our feel, I mean, we agree with you on that aspect, that we should be maintaining this to our own 100% because we're so small, but because it's state mandated.
I don't know what can or cannot be considered an ADU. I brought up the RV. I don't know that you couldn't say that that's an ADU. Or somebody wants to get in a, uh, maybe a 600-foot tough shed and fit it out. You know, is that what we're talking about, or?
So, I mean, I guess that's something we would have to look more into. I mean, building code's not gonna let it, let somebody pull a building permit on an RV, or anything that has wheels on it. So that's, that's what will catch that, um, even if our code doesn't. Um, however, metal buildings and structures, I'm cer- I'm sure there's some criteria in the building code for dwellings, um, that would steer more towards wood frame, um.
It would have to meet minimum building standards for a residence, so insulation, heat, air.
This sounded like it was a, just a brucolic swag.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, is it possible to buy a tough shed and convert it to living space? Sure, you know, if you put the work into it, give it insulated walls, heat, air, um, windows, I mean, if it, if it can.
Call it a tiny home.
Tiny home, if you can meet the, the building code, then, yeah, the, the base structure.
And there are a lot of cities out there that are looking at those options, because they're addressing issues that we currently aren't posed with, like homelessness and these other things that are happening in their towns, that they're looking at taking, make, making changes in their codes to allow for that type of construction and find areas to put it and stuff. We're not there yet. We'll try to be proactive, that if we see that coming, we'll get out in front of it. But yeah, at that point, I, I'd hate to even go there unless we had to.
Well, I think the driver is, I mean, immediately, as soon as tried it, somebody were, if somebody were to commit with an ADU, the minute that they would have to make it fire sprinkled, it would just, it wouldn't, in the words of Mr. Wright, it wouldn't pencil out, because the driver, I mean, fire sprinklers and the pumps to operate fire sprinklers are so darn expensive that you couldn't afford to put an ADU. It just makes sense to just tear your home down and build a whole other home, so.
A- a- and I'm not, I like what you said, you know, if you got your in-laws, or you've got grandma, you know, wants a room there, that, I mean, that's not what I'm even thinking. I'm thinking, you know, some guy's got a 17,000-foot lot and he's renting it out, and what's it stopping from saying, "You know what, I'm gonna put up a bag of Bond Hotel over here and just get all kinds of money." Do they, i- i- if they do that in Westwood Country, do, does each one of those units have to have it on their property tax, their LLD fees? You know, are they participating, or are they just, I, I, I don't know what the whole philosophy is here.
Yeah, it hasn't reached there yet.
It's whatever can go wrong, will go wrong. It's not whatever go, could be right, stays right.
So we do have restrictions on the size, the 1,200 square feet, the amount of, uh, floor space for an attached can't exceed 50% of the proposed or existing primary dwelling, living area, or 1,200 square feet. So they're limited in size, they're limited in height, the 15 feet. They're limited in, in how many you can have, one accessory dwelling unit. So it's specific to just the one accessory dwelling unit. You could still have your shed and your other things that aren't, that aren't permitted, maybe at all, or aren't permitted for, as a dwelling. Um, so in that case, if we did show up to somebody's house, if they're all, if they're not permitted at all, they're all gonna get to, they're all gonna be told to tear them all down. Um, or submit permits to show us that you could get these permitted, and then we're gonna say, "You have two of them, you're only allowed to have one, pick which one you want permitted, and you'll have to tear down the other one." And there's no exception to that, we're not gonna let them have more than one, because it doesn't meet our density, it doesn't meet the zoning, um, and we are limiting it to one in accordance with the state code and our municipal code.
I've got full faith and confidence in you guys, I've seen what you've done and, and some of the stuff here tonight. You know, I just, I just hate to see another group come in and say, "Ah, not gonna even bother with it." You know, "It's allowed by this, this state's telling us to do it, you know, I got bigger fish to fry." And, and, you know, I, I, you know, one of, one of the reasons I enjoyed being a hazardous materials person and enforcing codes in the city that I did is, is taking trips to Mexico. And you see, you know, propane tanks on top of storefronts and no, no storm drains, and, and people tied into electrical poles, you know, they take the meat around. And you just don't wanna junk things up. And that, that was my concern by, by reading this thing. My concern isn't with you guys, I, I think you're really good, so, thank you.
I think that, and, and no offense to our neighboring cities, but I believe that this problem is not really gonna be a big issue for the city of Escalon and some of our other larger municipalities. Look out.
I, there's a, a woman that I used to pick up for her cancer treatment over in Oakdale, and her son's house, he made a back bedroom over into a, a little apartment for her, put a gate in the fence, it was on a corner lot, and so she could come outside the gate, wait for me, and I'd drop her off there. And so she'd be in her own little place, but then the, the patio, the pool area was common to both the residents and, and her. So she had a nice little ADU. Um, conversely, I went to a yard sale here in town, and the people rolled up their garage door, and within two feet, there was drywall, because they had converted the rest of the garage into a bedroom. I should've said something.
We'll talk later.
Yeah.
We'll talk later.
Let's see, where was that? But, so, yeah, people are doing it right, people are doing it wrong.
Yeah, and the whole idea behind, um, and that's where the state's coming from too, is the whole idea with lessening the restrictions is, and lessening how much it would cost and taking away certain aspects is, is not only making it more affordable, and then the, on the other plus side, which is probably more minimal, but more of a focus for us, is that they come to the city and pull a permit for what they're doing, so that we can at least go in there and make sure that it's being done at code at some point, and documented in the file.
All right, so do we have a motion to make a recommendation to the city council that, that they adopt the ordinance amendment with these recommendations?
You go ahead and open and close the public hearing.
I thought I did open the public hearing, sorry.
No, that's okay.
I will open the public hearing at 9:55. Any comments from the public? Okay, we will close the public hearing at 9:55. And do we have a motion to make a recommendation to the city council to adopt the ordinance amendment?
I'm, I'll make a motion, uh, to move with staff's recommendations.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any abstention? Thank you, Dominique, for all your hard work, and Diana, and Jenny, and Tammy. All right, matters presented from the audience. At this time, the public may address the planning commission on any non-agendized item that is within the authority of the commission. The speaker is limited to a maximum five minutes, unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. Determinational whether an item is within the authority of the commission is a discretionary decision made by the commission chair. And we have no more audience members, so let's move on. Staff communications.
So I had just one, uh, item regarding planning commission. Um, we are still delivering packages to you at your houses. Uh, was wondering if that's something that maybe we don't have to do any longer, just wanted to see. Um, for those of you that are fine taking it online, we could do it that way. Uh, we could also have you read it online, and then if you want us to have a copy ready for you here, we could print it out and have it here waiting for you. Um, if you still want us to deliver, that's fine, we just thought we'd put it out there, um, because we're giving you an accommodation that we do not give the council anymore, so.
Unrightfully so.
So we just wanted to, to feel you out and see if that's something that we wanna continue with as is, or if you're open to just doing it online.
I make a recommendation, and I don't, I have not seen the 2019, 2020 budget, but, um, would it behoove the city to invest in a little tablet that you issue to planning commissioners and the city council, and then that everything is all electronic?
So council does have tablets, um, so they're paperless. Um, we can definitely look into whether or not we can do that. That's up to Tammy.
Budget is Monday night, so.
Yeah. I, I have a tablet, I also have a, a laptop. I wouldn't be opposed to getting an email saying that the package is ready for us to pick up. I, I like tagging sections here.
And that's understandable.
I don't have a problem coming down here to get it.
My, my only concern with tablets for you guys is because you typically have a plan set, and on a tablet, that's obviously not gonna be very functionable in that matter.
Lot of zooming in.
Yeah.
And when there are a lot of pages, it takes a while to download it, too, at home, so.
I was just thinking, if we had a tablet, we could have it with just basic agendas and minutes, an electronic copy of the municipal code that we could use as a reference, and go paperless.
So is the issue the delivery or the printing?
No, it's just something that we've been doing, and we don't have an issue with any, either way, but.
I'm a really good deliverer, so.
I delivered them last time, so if you guys all got them.
No, I, I appreciate the paper copy to, uh, to, to mark up, but, um, I'm happy to come down and get it, so.
You could save your manila envelope.
Yeah.
And I do take them back, too, and if you wanna return them to any of us after the meeting, we recycle, so, unless you like collecting.
Well, there's a free, for those of you that like to mark things up, there's a free app called Blue Beam Review, where you can make all your notes and you come, everything already preloaded. And if you wanted to, well, I guess that'd be a violation of the Brown Act, but I was gonna say you can even set up sessions that we can look at it collectively, but it's not a public meeting.
Yeah, I don't think we could do that part.
Yeah.
It, it sounds like I'm not as technologically advanced as some of them up here. I, I do like the paper copy to make my notes on and everything, but I could certainly come and get it rather than.
Yep.
Okay, well, they'll be at my desk every month then.
So we'll definitely follow up with the email, letting you know that they're ready to pick up. Um, and then, yeah, we can have them.
And if something comes up, you can't make it during business hours and you need us to dr- deliver them, then, you know, please feel like you can ask us to do that.
I like getting out of the office, so.
Actually, it's problematic, and I'm sure it's diff- maybe difficult for Commissioner Sarkozy sometimes to be here within city business hours, so.
I'm sure you could pick one up for him.
I'm not, don't get into town till seven o'clock.
Well, they said they'd draw that off to him.
Maybe.
Don't make an exception for me.
So, so what we, so what we can do is we put the email out where it gives you the link to the agenda online. Um, and then if anybody has any issues, they think, where they're not gonna be able to pick it up and an amount of time that they feel they're gonna be able to review it, let us know what you would like us to do, whether it be sticking it on at your door. It's better to just deliver it than stick it in the mail, you won't get it in time, but, um, so we can just deliver it.
Didn't I hear Commissioner Danziger said that he would deliver it? All right, um, Diana?
Just wanted to let everybody know that we will have a July meeting. And we have a conditional use permit coming up for Showoff Motorsports. They wanna locate in the Old Boat Country Warehouse area. Um, most things auto-related require conditional use permits in the C2. And so we'll be reviewing that at the July meeting. We also have a residence, just regular, regular R1, single-family residence that wants to build a workshop in their backyard, over 450 square feet, so it requires a conditional use permit. And they also wanna go a little bit taller than, um, the 15 feet allowed, so they've applied for a variance as well. So we'll be seeing both of those in July. I was just wanting to double-check, and we had one note that they won't be here for the July meeting. Does everybody else plan to be here, so we have a quorum? If not, we can make other arrangements for a special meeting.
Is that the 11th, or what?
The 9th.
The 9th?
July 9th.
Tuesday, July 9th.
Steve's checking his schedule.
I'm here, right now, I'm here.
Okay, we'll plan for that.
We can see you, yeah. And then just to bounce off of Diana's, um, item, because when she said July 9th, it ma- it made me remember, um, we are moving forward with the consultant regarding our general plan and housing element update. And we have scheduled a community workshop that we'll be putting out advertisement for in the next few weeks for the July 9th date at 6:00 PM. That will be in regards to getting input from the community regarding general plan and housing element updates. Um, that is one of two meetings, that's the community meeting, but we will be having a second meeting that will be during business hours. So if you can't make the six o'clock, or the six o'clock meeting, um, we'll have another one during the day. I believe it's gonna start at 2:00 PM, um, 2:00 to 4:00 PM, and I believe it's on the 18th. Um, I'll double-check that date for you, um, that it would be a second meeting similar, it is correct, okay. And it'll be similar in nature. Um, that one is, is aimed more at the stakeholders, which would be people that would be, or groups that would be affected by these changes, or would want to have input in those changes. But it would still be a community meeting that will basically focus on the same stuff, so there'll be two opportunities.
And the 9th is gonna be during Park Fate Week, but they don't do anything Tuesday night, right?
I don't believe so.
No, it's the, that day is the luncheon for senior Mr. and Miss.
Busy day.
That's all I have.
Jenny?
I have nothing.
Tammy?
Monday night.
Community meeting.
Budget workshop.
We're just calling everything community meeting now, because it gets a much better response.
All right, Commission Communications, Mr. Danziger.
Uh, again, I'd like to thank staff for all the work you did on the ADUs. And, uh, I, I'm kinda, uh, feeling for our, our family here on Kern, but, you know, it, it's, you know, it's always tough when somebody wants something that might be considered different. And, and I guess if you can, you try, but if you can't, they have to understand. And, uh, I mean, it's just, it's just a sad, hard thing for them, uh, I, I guess, to, to dwell on. But other than that, I haven't seen anything working on Lear. Um, they look like they're dead in the water, anything new?
They've been, they've started their civil improvements, they've pulled out the parking lots, getting ready to start undergrounding utilities.
Okay.
So we've got some movement on the civil.
I saw, I think, a forklift inside the, uh, old police building there. I don't know if that was something they were doing, but I, it wasn't moving, it was just, it was just there.
I think that's been there for a while. I remember seeing that in there.
That's it for me.
Commissioner Sarkozy?
Uh, just, I echo, good job, thank you for all your work. And, uh, probably just thoughts and prayers to the police officer that was involved, uh, sure, in, in the incident.
Both of them.
I'm Brennan, um, so I'm sure they're going through some things, um, so, thinking of them, that's all.
Commissioner Willis?
Um, yes, to, to have to deal with contentious people and issues, that's, that's above and beyond, so, good job. Um, there've been some news stories about people who have rented out their homes as Airbnbs, and while they're 5,000 miles away, they're watching their security cameras, and chaos is taking place and damage and all that, so I, I'm anxious to see what we get going as far as Airbnb here. Um, was that, now that parking issue, the RV and the newsletter, did you get some satisfaction on that? Or are we still waiting for?
It was, it was a newsletter, so I ju- just pointed out that there's a confusion, uh, as to the 72 hours versus the weekend.
But the code doesn't need to be changed or anything, it was just?
I, I don't think it'll appear in the newsletter again, so that might be sufficient.
And I, I was sad, um, when you look at the lumberyard to the left, um, there was a cement, uh, pad there, it's always had a pile of bricks on it, and that's where the switchboard used to be, there was a little building there that had the post office and the switchboard, a little general store. And I, I just, I mean, I know the building's been gone for ages, but to have that cement pad chopped up and, that, that made me sad. And I, but I was encouraged to hear that, um, Mr. Grassi wants to redo the big, the main building and have it look somewhat historically accurate. And I hope he has a lot of resources, you know, like at the museum and stuff like that, so. I, at least some of the history will be maintained, I like that.
Great, yeah.
I'm just glad to see some activity going on in the community. I, I, I like the idea that, that parcel is gonna be developed. Uh, I like the idea that Mr. Grassi's gonna, you know, en, enhance the look of the lumberyard, and, you know, maybe with the momentum going on there, things will move along quicker on the First Street improvements that kind of unify the rest of that area. There's a lot of positives going on. I'm looking at my steps, and I, I've gotten more this year than I have the last, you know, nine years already.
It's definitely been busy.
It's good that we're being on a more frequent basis.
Anything else? So, though, I have two quick items. One is, um, to the Claire's, um, I understand that your project was a, a work in progress, but I ask you to kindly follow through with your project and make sure you procure the proper building permits. But I know it may seem arduous, but if you're listening, just understand the position that we're in as planning commissioners for the longevity of Escalon. And we don't want, it's not fair for future planning commissions and city councils to be held to a condition that we put forth in 2019. So I hope they can appreciate our position. Last thing I have is, uh, I wanna thank my fellow commissioners for allowing me to be chair in 2018 and 2019. It's been truly an honor, and I wish all the best to our chair for 2019, 2020, Commissioner Sarkozy. So, that's it. With that, we will adjourn the meeting at 10:10.
Thank you.